Good evening, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education meeting. Today is Wednesday, January 26, 2022. Before we stand for our pledge of allegiance, I would just ask that, following our pledge of allegiance, that we please remain standing for a moment of silence to honor two women who sadly we lost in our Monroe School District family since the last meeting. Ms. Christine Tumanello, she was a bus driver here in Monroe Township for 16 years. She is beloved by her coworkers, her friends, her family, and all the students who she transported back and forth all those years to their schools. We wish her family our sincerest sympathy and condolences. Sadly, Monroe Township also lost another community member, Mrs. Kate Maiola. Kate was a substitute in our school district for many, many years and had such an impact on the students who were fortunate enough to have her. Kate volunteered for many years in our, on our parent groups in our school district, volunteering countless hours that really made an impact to all of the children and students in our school district. So again, if you would please join me in a moment of silence to offer our deepest sympathy and condolences to their family and friends. And I ask now if we please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
We'll have our roll call. Here.
Ms. Belko.
Here.
Ms. Spearman.
Here.
Ms. Bora.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
He is remote, I believe. Yeah? Can he hear you?
Mr. Chiarella, can you respond?
There he is.
Thank you.
I'm here.
Ms. Fabiano.
Here.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Here.
Ms. Ratner.
Ms. Rutzke.
Here.
And Ms. Kirby.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a forum present for this evening. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published and electronic notice provided by having the date time and place thereof posted January 21, 2022 at all schools on the district website at HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW.MONROE.K12.NJ.us, The Home News Tribune, The Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is our approval of our minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the public board of education meeting minutes from December 15, 2021?
Motion.
Motion second?
Yeah.
Ms. Arminio? Okay. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Obstain.
Obstain? Mr. Rutzke abstains. Any other abstentions or recusals? No? Okay. Can, then I guess that passes, that's approved. Can I get a motion to approve the closed session meeting from December 15, 2021?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Arminio and Ms. Spearman, the second. Are there any questions or changes to the minutes?
Obstain.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Obstain.
Obstain.
Okay, Mr. Rutzke, Ms. Fabiano, and Ms. Bora abstain?
So moved.
Okay, then that passes. Can I get a motion to approve the public board of education organizational meeting minutes from January 3, 2022?
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Fabiano, a second. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or recusals? Okay, seeing none. Those are approved. And can I get a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes of January 3, 2022?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Chiarella and Ms. Arminio. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any abstentions or recusals? Okay, seeing none. Those are approved as well. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our student board member report. We have both of our student board members here this evening, so if we'd like to start with Samara Jane.
Hi. So this month at Mill Lake, Mrs. Lane's class with the third grade student council unveiled the new book vending machine that was graciously donated by the Woodland and Mill Lake PTO and MTEA. The students and staff, despite the recent surges of COVID cases, worked with one another to ensure that there is continuity of instruction and learning, and everyone at Mill Lake pulled together as a team. Their new student, their new school counselor Nicole Benz, in an effort to give their students social and emotional learning resources, has recently completed in-class lessons on emotional regulation and management. Mill Lake continues to give their students not only academic skills but the tools they need to be emotionally and socially competent. At Woodland this month, they celebrated Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day with several classroom activities. One class read My Brother Martin by Christine King Ferris and Keeping the Dream Alive, an article by Dr. King's granddaughter. And the class took Dr. King's speeches and analyzed three quotes with partners. Their winter concert is also here this month, and they were very excited to show off their talents. At Applegarth, to start off the new year, the student council focuses on positive self-esteem, and with the help of Applegarth staff, the students will gain more strategies and have discussions on ways to be more positive self-esteem, which goes along with their school goal of emotional, social, emotional learning. The students have also been raising money for the American Heart Association through their annual Kids' Hearts Challenge, and if the students raise a certain amount of money, they will be able to pie their teachers and principals in the face.
Great, thank you. And now we'll hear from our other student board member, Shivank Ladupalli.
At Brookside, student in Ms. Tonis's fourth grade class entered their writing mini sagas in the Young Writers Ridiculous Writer Contest. These were over 3,500 entries were submitted, and all the students in Ms. Tonis's class had their work chosen for publication. The goal of the young writers was to install passion and confidence in students for writing, and publishing students' work allows students to proudly showcase their work for an audience. At Barclaybrook, students at Barclaybrook are participating in the Great Kindness Challenge during the week of January 24. It helps create a school culture of kindness, compassion, unity, and respect. The Great Kindness Challenge holds a simple belief that kindness is strength. With that Great Kindness Challenge checklist in hand, students have the opportunity to repeat kind after kind's act. At Oak Tree, during the month of December, very successful gift drives for families were in need at Oak Tree. We're overwhelmed by the, they were overwhelmed by the number of donations from Oak Tree families and their staff. There was also the One Book One School Challenge. On February 22, the principal reads the same story to the entire school throughout the day, and the classes participate in activities connected to the story. There were parent-teacher conferences on February 23 and February 24. There's going to be a school-wide celebration day on February 25 to reward students for earning Rising Star tickets. It will be a game day. Over at the middle school, the middle school held their second career café with the sixth grade. Students who showed interest in architecture and engineering met via Zoom with an architect who taught them about his job, as well as the schooling that he went to. Students were able to ask questions. MTMS participated in a holiday door decorating contest prior to winter break, with the winner in each grade winning a pizza party. Seventh and eighth grade band concert occurred on January 24, two days ago, directed by Ms. Gina Vinigara. And on February 1, there will be a seventh and eighth grade jazz band concert at the middle school. Over here at the high school, the members of Navy SEAL is in, are in the junior and senior cafeterias for all lunches, giving students wisdom and knowledge about the Navy. The senior class is holding a senior fundraiser selling t-shirts for prom. And the National Arts Honor Society has been fundraising by selling bears for Valentine's Day during all lunches. And Murder and Mystery, hosted by the Drama Club, will be on February 10 and 11, and tickets must be bought in advance.
Great, thank you very much. Our next item on our agenda is presentations. Now I would like to introduce Mr. Rich Alderisio from Design Ideas Group Architecture, who is going to give us a presentation this evening.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Middle School, Applegarth Elementary School, and the high school. Just want to make sure we're, okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to look at the, we're going to look at the middle school first, and just trying to make sure this pointer works. Okay, so what we're looking at here is additions and alterations to the middle school in order to increase capacity for unhoused students. Everyone who is familiar with the school knows this is Perrinville Road. Here's the bus entrance for bus parking. Here's the parent drop-off entrance. And basically you have the main entrance to the school, the performing arts, the science wing in the back, and the back parking, baseball field, and off to the north is the high school, just to orient you. What we want to do here is try to take the existing plan as it exists and really accomplish a couple of goals. One, want to retain the things that work really well about this school in, as far as parking, bus drop-off, parent drop-off, things that really work well that we want to retain and maintain without interrupting. The other is, we want to try to create as much space as we can while keeping the plan as compact as we can, keeping a plan that really is easy to navigate for students and really easy to manage for administrators. Basically what we're looking at is creating an addition, a two-story addition at the front of the building, and also renovating some of the existing space within the building in order to make the plan flow better, and again, to make it a more efficient plan. In doing that, if you're, if you're familiar with the, the parking area out front, we kind of have this strange key in the middle and some long parking. It, again, while it works well for drop-off, the, the parking setup as it currently exists can be more efficient than it is. We're looking to increase the spaces here, maintain the bus drop-off. Again, what works very well about this is you have a separate entrance for buses, separate entrance for parents, and again, separate egress for both parents and buses, which works very well. So what we're looking at again is a two-story addition along the front of the building. Again, that would run from really north to south, and create, again, if this is the existing plan, and this is the front of the building, we're looking to create a nice bar of classrooms and administrative spaces, and expansion to cafeteria out front. What we want to do is, we're looking at renovating the existing admin area, relocating admin to the front of the building adjacent to a new entrance over here that works much better and has a much better adjacency with the, with the admin, the new admin area. Also looking to expand the cafeteria, which sits right here currently. Again, trying to keep the, the plan nice and compact, keep the cafeteria almost as an outgrowth, the addition as an outgrowth of the existing cafeteria, and then also come across and add classroom space at the first level here. In doing this, we want to create a nice circulation spine, a nice corridor here that connects all of the existing corridors, and just makes the plan again, a more intuitive plan for students and, and for administrators to, to navigate. Up on the second floor, again, basically along the front, all classrooms across the front of the building, and again, tying into existing corridors and again, into existing, you know, existing spaces and classroom space. One of the, a couple of the opportunities here that we're looking at by putting an addition on the front, proposing an addition on the front of the building is that, really, you know, we're proposing to renovate an existing building, and in doing that, we'd really like to try to give the building a new identity, really make it look like a new building, a 21st century school, and also function as one. So again, pretty, pretty straightforward addition, again, nice compact bar along the front, take advantage of existing space, and really, again, take advantage of the plan as it originally existed, in keeping it efficient, keeping it tight, keeping the core spaces And again, it's a, you know, I think, very quickly, it enables us to, to really maintain the things that work well about the plan, circulation, creates a new identity, keeps the plan nice, tight, compact, and we'll ultimately add about 32 classrooms, create six teams of classrooms for approximately 800 students. So it's roughly a 67,000 square foot addition, about 8,300 square feet of renovations within the existing building to create space for about 800 students. And that's the, that's the middle school. We're also looking at Applegarth. Okay, and just to orient you again here, these are a little, a little dark on the screen, but I think this is Applegarth Road. Here's the original wing of the building, drop-off area, busing, and parent drop-off parking, and then again, this entire area here represents the Applegarth site. And we also are using this right now for parking as it exists today. So what we're looking to do here is, is renovate the existing building, new HVAC, windows, building envelope improvements such as roofing, new mechanical, plumbing, electrical. And in doing that, we're also proposing a sizable addition to the north side of the building, which would include classrooms, special education classrooms, SGI space, new cafeteria, and we would also take advantage of the current space at the original wing in the basement. We would renovate that, create five classrooms there. And again, this, this addition, very compact addition, I think, which would, again, keep circulation very tight, I think, nice, again, kind of an intuitive plan to navigate. The entrance would remain where it is, but we'd have this nice cafeteria here that is accessed from two corridors and, and really kind of take advantage of what we have on the site to build in this area. And I think by virtue of creating an addition like this, we would have really a nice courtyard space here that can be taken advantage, advantage of for outdoor learning space and other things. This addition with the renovations inside would create about 475 new seats for students, about 17 classrooms, four special ed rooms, SGI room, child study team space, and again, the cafeteria and kitchen. Addition is roughly 29, 30,000 square feet, and there would be, that basement space that we're showing up here is about 5,000 square feet of renovation area. And we'd also take advantage of some of the spaces here that are, that are underutilized, like locker rooms and things, to create a music room, art room possibly. They're nice sized spaces that would also undergo renovation. And that is Applegarth. And we're also looking at a modest addition over at the high school. So this is just on this little site plan, that Schoolhouse Road, Perrinville here, and we're looking at an addition, if you're familiar with the, the north side of the building we're in, there's a nice, it's a nice open area on the north side of the site. It's really an existing overhang, which above it, there are classroom spaces. Below it, again, is a pretty sizable area, probably about 6,500 square feet. And we're looking to generate, again, about a six classrooms within that space, general classrooms generating probably about 150 seats for students. So it'll be a nice addition to the high school in a space that really kind of lends itself to, to a, a nice addition. So just in general, the costs, the range of cost for these projects, that middle school project, the addition and renovations fall somewhere in the range of about 45 to 50 million. The Applegarth work with the renovations, the addition, similarly about 45 to 50 million. And the high school addition would probably be in the four to five million range. Any questions?
All right, I'd like to open it up to the board members if anybody has any questions. Mr. Rutzke?
If I may, for the high school addition, is that, I just can't tell, is that, are you building a permanent structure for those six classrooms, or is this something, I know we've talked a lot at these meetings about modular, is this, what is this going to be?
So this is really an outgrowth of the existing building. This would be up against the existing facility, so we would stay in keeping with the, the construction that exists here today, really a brick and mortar addition, windows. And again, it, it's, and an addition because of its location, we're taking advantage of the building, so it's really a, a two-walled addition.
Right.
No roof system, we're really building below the existing building.
And the entrances are all on the inside, right? There's no exit doors outside?
Right, that, that joins up to an existing corridor which would, which would serve the classroom spaces, and you would enter an egress from those, from those same corridors.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Just for the sake, I mean, I was at the, the Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation meeting, and I asked this question, but for the sake of, for public understanding, could you again explain, you know, my, my favorite thing about the, the addition that we may need down the road, and if it's impacted or not, and if you can explain that little red box?
Sure. Okay, so in this area, there is, in the district's long-range facilities plan, a proposal for a larger addition, we've called it, we've referred to it as the tower addition. It's a multi-story addition that would, down the line, take care of unhoused students. This, this proposed area that we're looking at now will work with what has been proposed in the past for the existing tower addition.
So there's no complication in doing this for our future needs? It's not, it's not going to detract from any necessity to build that addition down the road?
Correct, we can make this work with that original plan.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? Ms. Belko?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the middle school renovations in the front there. One of the things that I always thought was a nice feature of that was the windows on those classrooms, so, and the cer, and, and the potential for like circulation and light, how do we propose that we're going to sort of maintain that piece of that? Any?
Sure, so I think I understand your question. On the, on the existing classrooms, you're, sure, so in this area, right up against that area, we're actually showing a light well before we add the corridor in order to maintain light and the window systems at these existing classrooms. And similarly, down at the lower level, we have the same thing. So we're really trying to maintain light. Also, we, you know, at the cafeteria addition, we'd like to have a, you know, very, we envision a very nicely penetrated wall that lets a lot of light into that space, but is, is also a secure space.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions? All right, one thing that I wanted to just comment on, and I did as well at the Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee. So the BGNT committee had asked for DI group to come in and look at renovating and restoring Applegarth, adding on a, a middle school addition, as well as an addition to the high school. That was a culmination of everything that we've gone through over the last 10 years. We've had various ad hoc committees that has looked at many different plans. We have contemplated taking ninth grade out of the high school, putting it into the middle school, taking sixth grade out of the middle school, putting them back to the elementary schools. There has, has been a lot of work over the last 10 years trying to develop plans that the community would accept. We've had two failed referendums despite all of our efforts to try and get new schools built. So instead of going back out a third time with a plan that clearly the community did not support building new facilities, we really wanted to take a look at what we could do to be fiscally responsible and add on to our buildings that currently exist. So I think that, you know, I, I'm excited to see this plan, and I think the next steps forward, we could take this back to the BGNT committee for further discussions, and if you could walk us through the next step, the next phases, I know we are waiting for our demographers report that should be completed and, and to the board, I believe, by February. If you could walk us through some of the next steps in the process.
Certainly. So really, the next step in the process is to develop these plans as three separate projects that get submitted to the Department of Education for review and approval. And they generally review these plans for educational adequacy when you're modifying an existing building, adding footprint for students. We'll develop plans for every single space, whether it's a special ed room or cafeteria addition, classroom. Each space will show the furniture, the size, the proposed occupant load for that space, dimensions, and with that, we submit educational specifications, which again, describe each space, whether it's a storage room, kitchen, or a classroom, describes each space in detail, its purpose, again, size. All of that is packaged. Each, each project, Applegarth Middle School, High School, would have its own state project number. They would be submitted separately but probably reviewed simultaneously. We would also, at that time, amend the district's long-range facilities plan. In doing that, we, again, we take a look at the demographic study, the projections, and enter all new data into that plan, and basically prove to the DOE that the plan accommodates any unhoused students that you, that you currently have. And those are, you know, that's a plan that is a five-year plan, and it's to be updated every five years, and it includes a lot of data about where you were, where you are today, and where you anticipate going with that plan. Once the Department of Education reviews those, approves those plans- Once the Department of Education reviews those, approves those plans, the submission, which includes a cost estimate for each school, will be vetted by the DOE, and then they will come back to the district with, they call it preliminary eligible cost letter for each school approving the plans. They will indicate what the state share is for each school. So the numbers that we show here at the end, they don't include any state share you would get. Any state share would come off of, really would come off of the top of these numbers. And then from there, once approved, once you accept the preliminary eligible cost, you move towards a referendum.
And just speaking about the numbers, I know it did come up in the Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee at one point, I don't think it was this past meeting, but maybe in December, there was discussion, the department, the Department of Education, I think it was said that normally the percentage of their share is higher if you restore a building rather than building a new building. I know, I think Mr. Gorski, you had touched upon that at one point, maybe if we can get an explanation for that, I think the state is, usually gives more money to a district that is restoring or renovating a building rather than building new?
They do look at renovation costs separately from your costs of the additions, they take that into account. They also look at the socioeconomic makeup of each school district to assess that cost, and then they have a formula that associates unhoused students with square footage. And I think depending on the actual renovation amount and addition amount, you may wind up with more favorable numbers with that. But again, it is part of a somewhat complicated formula that they use. I know it's very important to, I think the closer we follow the Department of Education's facility standards as far as sizes of spaces and gross to net square footage and things like that, where they take into account, you know, if they, if they think that a corridor should be ten foot wide and you show it at fifteen foot wide, you know, they'll take that into account when they look at the value of the state share. It's very, it's helpful to follow those standards to the greatest extents that we can.
Okay. Ms. Bierman?
Our past ad hoc committee, one of the takeaways was the proposal was to build within the state model so that if that referendum were to put out and fail, put out again and fail, we would have the opportunity to appeal to the state and have the state come in and override the failure and allow us to still proceed with the building. Are these additions, do they fall in that same cadence?
Yeah, as they're shown here today, as they're represented here today, the sizes of the spaces that we're showing are in accordance with the state model.
Thank you. Ms. Arminio?
But part of the question was, do we qualify for the state coming in if the referendums fail? Everybody says, well, let the state take over and, you know, help us build that. Do we qualify as a community for that program?
In order to do that, you basically have to go out with the same project multiple times. So any modification to the project, say this went out and it failed, and we put it out again and changed anything, it failed again, we couldn't qualify for that. You really have to put the identical project out multiple times in order to be...
And that's like a four-year window, right? If the referendums fail, and then you have to put it out a second time, that's probably a four-year window?
No, you can go right into the next year.
Can we go right into the next year?
You can resubmit as quickly as you can get ready for the following referendum.
But just to be clear, it's not that the state would come in and pay for the school, it's that the state would come in and compel us to move forward with the financing or however we're gonna pay for it, and we still, it's like there was a yes vote even though there was a no vote.
Right. And one final thing, the last, the most recently failed referendums, there was no state financing available at that time, and now it's, now the DOE has come back, and I know that these most, the most recent ones, I thought that there wasn't gonna be any contribution from the state. Am I incorrect on that one?
I believe, Mr. Gorski, if you want to touch on that, I believe there was a dollar amount that was supposed to be coming from the state.
On the district website, there's an archived spot for the old referendum information. We have all the presentations and all the videotapes that we did, and there's a slide that I have committed to memory that does indicate there was a decent state aid award for both projects. The middle school got less of an award than the expansion of the high school. And I don't have that number in my head, but you can get it off the website.
That's fine, I just thought that there wasn't, there wasn't any funds available for that particular one, and I knew for this building, there certainly were. But, okay, thank you.
Mrs. Skirby, can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
With the eight-hundred-student addition, this current middle school would become close to two-thousand-student capacity. My question was two parts. One, I know that's a fairly large middle school. In your experience, are there any downsides to, from a logistics perspective, the way you see our school currently? Do you see anything that should be done besides this to, you know, to make it easier for our day-to-day operations of the school for that size? And the second question is that when you go through the process of getting the referendum, you know, paperwork in place, does the DOE give any consideration to that school size for middle school? Would that weigh into your process of getting us ready for the referendum? Thank you.
Sure. So generally, again, I think what we like to see when you, when the school starts to reach, you know, eighteen hundred, two thousand, twenty-five hundred students, we'd like to see that plan stay as compact as it can, with good circulation. Again, when the footprint starts to sprawl, really when spaces get too far away from core spaces, and you really, to get from one side of a building to another starts to take ten minutes, it's challenging, and it's a challenging thing to manage. I think right now, given the site, given where you are with, again, bus drop-off, parent drop-off, which seems to work very well, I think you're well positioned to put an addition on this school and have it function well. I think what's important, again, is that we keep, you know, keep this compact and not really start to integrate additions that are too far from the core spaces. As far as the Department of Education goes, they've seen, they've seen everything, they've seen, you know, three thousand square foot elementary, or three thousand student element, you know, very, very, very large schools. What they will comment on more than likely is if you show a classroom, and we have an eight-hundred-square-foot classroom, and we're showing that we're trying to get thirty-five students in there, they'll comment on that. They really want to be in that twenty-one to twenty-five student range per classroom. Same with any of the big core spaces, you know, they have a formula for, which starts to govern and dictate really how much space you need per student based on the use of the space, whether it's a special education space, a gymnasium, cafeteria, or a general classroom. So those are the type of things they will comment on, they'll take a closer look at.
Thank you.
Sure.
Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for coming this evening and presenting to us. I guess, like I said, our next steps would be to bring this back to the BGNT committee and await our demographic study, that should be to us shortly, and then discuss that as well, how that affects the plans going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Okay, our next item on the agenda is our committee reports. Do we have any committees wishing to give a report? Ms. Belko?
Curriculum committee was held on January nineteenth, and we welcomed new board members, Gazala Borah, Kate Ratner, Ms. Arminio joined the curriculum committee this year, and Ms. Skirby as our ex officio. Dr. Lehman and Dr. Chanley were also present. We had presented to us several clubs. We have the Amnesty International Club, which is basically, their purpose is to encourage and motivate high school students taking action regarding civil liberty issues. There's more information about their, you know, their whole application, I'm not gonna read all of it. Their teacher sponsor spoke about how this club will fit very nicely in with the curriculum for social studies and for the, for the growing needs and interests that we are doing with our students as far as civic duty and the things that they do, so they were very excited about that. The next club was the SEEK Student Association, and I'll just read from their initial statement, and that is that they, the requirement's to be a club member, to be a dedicated student and open to learning about the customs and values of another culture, and they're, they want to have some co-teachers and some other things, and there was some discussion about the club. We have other clubs that are similar to this club, we have the Adelante Hispanic and Latin Heritage Club, the African-American Club, Muslim Student Alliance Club, and the Fellowship Christian Athletes Club. The next club that was presented to us was the South Asian Performing Arts. There were a lot of questions that the committee had for this club, so we asked them to go back and relook at their application and to bring it forward to us at the next meeting so that we could take some time to review it and to look at it. So we look forward to their revisions and what they're gonna be bringing to us. The Muslim Student Association asked for a name change to Muslim Student Alliance, no, it's backwards, it's the other way, I'm sorry, it's backwards on here. It is currently named the Muslim Student Alliance, they want to change the name to the Muslim Student Association, and so the committee heard their information on that. We had a couple of, we had a presentation, very short presentation by Zach, oh my goodness, Maraldo, thank you, his last name ran out of my head, in reference to a partnership with the School of Business with the Delaware, University of Delaware. And we only had about seven minutes left, and if you've ever heard Mr. Maraldo talk, it was a pretty fast talk, but if you want to hear everything that he had to say about this partnership, which I think is really a good piece, please go avail yourself of the video, and the information is on the website. So, oh, and there was a presentation about the, by Dr. Higgins from the high school about the Monroe Township Online Course of Studies. It's going to be an interactive on the website for the township, giving parents and students a little bit of an easier way to look at the electives, look at the curriculum, the course of studies document that is out there will still be out there as it is now, and it will, they hope to have it up and running for some of the spring to be able to have some of the freshmen be able to go through it and see that, and it'll be, once that comes up online, we'll let everybody know and we'll pass it along. And that's my report.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Belko? Okay, now, do we have another committee wishing to report? Ms. Fabiano?
So on Thursday, January twentieth, the Community Engagement and Communications Committee met. Kate Ratner was elected the vice chair of our committee, Gazala Borah was also there, Ms. Ratner, Dr. Lehman, Mrs. Chanley, and we talked, did I forget anybody? Ms. Bierman, you were there also, anyway, I forgot someone. We discussed the communication survey, which has been sent to Elliott with some revisions. We are hoping to get the survey out to the community very soon in hopes that we will have the data by March. We're working with the township, and we're exploring if it is possible to get the survey link incorporated into newsletters that go out into the senior communities. We want to ensure that we can get as much community involvement as possible since we believe that everyone in the community has a vested interest in our schools and what's best for our children. We also discussed the advertising initiative, which is ready to be pushed out, and the signs will be three by eight and displayed around our track. And lastly, we discussed the invitation to Senator Greenstein. As of the meeting, we had not received any response from her, and I did send a follow-up to her on Monday, and I did receive a reply from her chief of staff stating that they were working on her schedule for the upcoming weeks and they would follow up with us, but I'm also going to follow up again on Monday to hopefully get a response. And that's my report.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Fabiano? Okay, seeing none, are there any other committees wishing to report? Ms. Arminio?
Hi, thank you. On January twentieth, the twenty-twenty-two, the new policy committee met. We have our returning member Karen Bierman, we had Katie Fabiano as our new member, Mr. Nikotinsky, Adi Nikotinsky as a returning member, and of course, our president Chrissy Skirby. That is the policy committee. We reviewed four policies out of the nine policies on the agenda, and the policies that were reviewed are subject, and subject to revision are as follows. The first one is policy one-one-one-zero, which is an organizational chart that controls the district staff organization. When I'm finished, if Ms. Chanley would like to speak to that, she can, if not, it's listed on our website as well, it's available. Okay, and that was, the changes were submitted and recommended to the policy committee by Acting Superintendent Shari Chanley, and approved by the committee for recommendation to the full board this evening. The next one was policy eight-three-one-zero, public records. The changes were also forwarded from the two thousand, twenty-twenty-one previous policy committee, they had not been able to review it. The board president Chrissy Skirby recommended revisions, revised language stating that the board designates a confidential, the confidential secretary to the superintendent, and in his or her absence, the assistant superintendent as custodian of government records for the district. This was also approved by the committee for recommendation to the board this evening. I will have Ms. Chanley speak to the next policy, which is one-six-four-eight-point-one-one, the Road Forward COVID Health and Safety. Those revisions are fluid and subject to change due to the ongoing severity of the COVID-19 pandemic. The policy committee approved the recommendations, this is one for sure, we had to depend on the recommendations from the administration, with the understanding that this policy remains open to administration revision as necessary for the health and safety of the district. The administration will provide written revisions as we go along. And then finally, before Ms. Chanley speaks to that policy, there's a bylaw zero-one-four-one-point-two. Bylaws, and Mr. Gegliardi, if you would, if need be, you can help me with that. Bylaws are really instructions for the board that we follow as our own rules and regulations. So the members of the board and the board as a whole, we have bylaws that we sort of, we sort of act under. So the bylaw was, let's see, the Board of Education shall consist of nine to ten members subject to the following statutes in the law. The sending district representative shall have limited voting rights in accordance with NJSA eighteen A colon three-nine dash eight-point-one. That's a lot, that would be something people, we would look that up. And again, I believe, let me repeat it, so in case anybody wants to listen to this. NJSA, that's a state legislative law, eighteen A colon three-eight dash eight-point-one. Okay, and that was approved by the committee for recommendation to the board this evening. Ms. Chanley, if you would like to just give a brief discussion of the Road Forward, the COVID-19.
Certainly. Thank you very much, Ms. Arminio. Welcome, everyone. So as you, I'm sure are aware, because I have been receiving some communication, the CDC and then the Department of Health, and then eventually the New Jersey Department of Education, because they tend to be a little slower in getting on board with the recommendations, came out with some new recommendations, and the recommendations are in reference to the quarantine period, which has changed, some of you may not, may or may not realize, originally it was a fourteen-day period of time, and then we went ahead and we changed it to ten. Now the CDC, and then in turn, like I said, the Department of Health, and then the New Jersey DOE, we were waiting for them to get on board, said that for the districts that would like to move forward to the five-day quarantine, which means, and there's gonna be some specifics, but in general, the student would then return on the sixth day. And in reference to symptoms and positive results, it's actually the seventh day because of the way day zero works. So it's actually, it is the sixth day of return. So we had a lot of conversations, a lot of discussions, and we looked at a lot of the inform- information. We spoke, Dr. Lehman and myself, and we also looked at other districts, not because we follow them, because we want to be respectful of what's going on around us, but Monroe is unique to Monroe, and we take care of our own. That all being said, we wanted to make sure that if we followed the new guidelines and took direction, we also looked at some of the limitations in the language that was put out there. So a determination was made, and my recommendation is, and then I'll be happy to explain it, determination was made and the recommendation is, for those children that were positive and are quarantining, they may return on the sixth day with either a negative PCR or a medical note saying that they are symptom-free and can return. If you are a close contact and you were asked to stay at home, and we have close contacts due to various different reasons, if you were a close contact regardless of those reasons, whether it was due to a lack of vaccination, unvaccinated, or a close contact due to the, like, the ramifications of who you were with, how you were, and usually unvaccinated due to age, you can return on the sixth day as long as you are symptom-free without any type of documentation of any kind. The reason why we decided to go in this fashion and not just have everybody come back and return is specific to the recommendations that they said we should be following. If we were to return without any type of requirements, we were to provide a plan of action of how we were to segregate and separate those students who returned. Because at although, at this time, we are all masked, there, excuse me? At this time, although we are all masked, there are opportunities in the schools when the children do not need to be masked. Appropriate physical education class activities during the lunchroom when they eat, we do, we do like to see them eat and then put their mask back on, but there are times for 10 minutes, 12 minutes, and so forth where they are eating, just some children need slower than others, depending upon the child. We would then have to separate or segregate those children, which I, which we, after consideration, felt that that would do unnecessary, and it could be very emotional for children, because there would be no way for us not to share who those children were once they returned. So that, that information, which is now kept private within the nurses, would then have to be shared with staff members, not just teachers, because these children, upon return, would then be singled out in the lunchroom, in the gymnasium, on the playground, and so forth. So, excuse me? Oh, yes. And sports also. The other thing was, and that the sports, they would not be approved to return on the sixth day to play sports. So by going with this requirement, it then removes all exclusions and allows the children to return. Dr. Lehman, is there anything that you want to add?
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for the policy committee or Mrs. Chanley on that policy?
Karen.
Ms. Bierman?
Okay. So, I've been in a couple of meetings with NJSBA in recent days since I knew that this was coming down the pike, and this was the recommendation. And the stigma issue is being addressed and discussed, and other school districts are giving feedback that they're finding paths around it, that they don't think it's a big problem, that the children are resilient to this. So I would like to just say that I could not be in favor of voting yes on that recommendation, that I feel like it should be parental choice either way, that they could allow their children to stay home for the extra time after day six and be entitled to home instruction, or they could allow their children to come in if they think their children are able to deal with the potential emotional issues that would come from that. Thank you.
Mr. Rutske had his hand up.
Oh, go ahead. Because I think she's talking about the same topic.
I'm actually not clear as to what you're suggesting, so, and who was it that you, you're getting this information from?
Last night, we had a NJSBA, like, they called it a wind-down. So it was a roundtable of 80 board members, superintendents, districts, people, right? And they just put you into five or six different breakout rooms, all different topics, all of it was COVID topics, because this is coming in front of every board. So some are a little ahead of us with addressing what they want to do at expiration of the EOs for masks, if they want to adopt CDC guidelines or not, on the quarantining, and so, you know, so some are ahead of us, some are behind us, and everybody's struggling with how to get there and find a place that makes everybody happy, which nobody is going to find, we know that. So it seems to be, it's either a stricter, more conservative approach where we're going to wave the flag for the safety of the children and go as strict as we possibly can, regardless of what the science is currently saying, and that things are kind of lightening up in the rest of the world, that schools are still going to keep that bubble. Or the other approach, districts, mostly in the South, that seem like they're going a lot more liberal with wanting to give choice to parents, choice to families, and still maintain safety, still maintain distancing, no certain stigmatization for, stigmatizing for anybody that does choose to wear a mask if it expires and it becomes optional. There's some districts talking about masking based on the Cali levels, you know, yellow and green, having it be optional, orange, having it be a gray area, red for sure, masking. So it, it, it's landing all over the place, everybody's struggling with it, and we're just all going to have to do the best, I guess, we can to come to consensus and try to keep everyone safe.
Well, are you, so, are you suggesting something different than what, what we have on the agenda tonight?
So...
And what would that be?
I would look for allowing parental choice if they want their child to come back at day six, which is in accordance with what the CDC is comfortable with, that they would need to be masked and follow the guidelines that CDC is putting forth, or they would have the choice to stay home and be entitled to the home instruction for the extended period if they were going to come back on day 10, or day 12, or day 14, whatever it lands on.
So that's not a remote option, that's specifically just for children who are home in quarantine? It's not a general remote option, which we cannot do, I want to be that clear about that.
Correct.
You're saying, let, let the parent choose to keep the child home for the full 10 days, really to simplify it.
Right. But give them the opportunity to come back without the burden of a PCR test, because that negative PCR test, from what I understand, from the people that have spoke at these symposiums, that negative PCR test is a vulnerability, because you can test positive long after the quarantine period.
Right.
So to get that test, now, I don't know if there's going to be friendly doctors out there that will do the other option that we're offering, which is that note that says you're symptom-free and can return. I don't know where doctors and pediatricians stand on that with, you know, how hard that is to get, I don't know. That does sound generous, though, for us to offer that as an alternative, because it does give a path if we are dealing with pediatricians that are willing to take that risk at this time.
Paul, I'm sorry.
No, if you're, I just want you guys to stay on whatever topic you're on until you're done.
I'm done.
I, I have a question.
Well, no, Paul was next.
Oh, is it, I'm, well, oh, I didn't know if we were going to be different topics, staying on this topic.
Okay.
Okay. So are we saying that they have to come back with the doctors note, stating that they're symptom-free? Or that their symptoms are improving?
Improving. Well, basically, what you have, well, because there is a difference, you're right, so they have to be fever-free, there are certain symptoms that they cannot have.
Right, they have to, I know they have to be fever-free for 24 hours, but...
Right, so for example, you could have a cough for two months.
Right, exactly. So that's what, that's, I guess that's my question. So are we, is, are we getting clearance from the doctor saying that they're symptom-free and can return, or, yep, it's day six, yes, you can go back to school, your symptoms are improving?
Correct.
Okay.
With the exception of the symptoms that they couldn't have.
Right, except for like a fever.
Correct, got it.
Ms. Belko?
This is the same topic. So I, I'm trying to find exactly what the change was here in the policy, but I need some clarification. So there's one scenario, if you're COVID-positive, you're home for at least five days, and you can come back, like Mrs. Fabiano said, with a note, doctor says you're getting better, you're okay. Or you are unvaccinated and you get pulled from school because you've been exposed to someone in the classroom, and currently, the policy is, it's seven days, and then could be 10 days, but you have to have a negative PCR test, which, by the way, on day five, takes four days to get the result back, so therefore, you're already at nine, nine days. So, so the change here is that at day six, you would allow the exposed child to come back to school without any PCR, without anything, no doctors note, nothing, as long as they're symptomatic, asymptomatic.
And masked.
Well, we're masked anyway. Right now, we have no choice, we're masked.
Right now, that's correct.
So that's what you're proposing tonight?
That's correct.
And one of the, one of the things, too, I know that has come up, was some of the districts are putting the onus on the nurses, and they're asking the nurses, upon coming back to school, they're making a determination if they can, if the students, I know some districts, I know Esprendergast is doing that, it's on the nurses to decide, are the symptoms, have the symptoms decreased enough to allow them to come back in? And I know there was a concern that you had raised about putting that responsibility on the nurses, instead of putting it on, putting it on the parents to maybe reach out to the child's pediatrician to get a note saying that they feel that it is, you know, that they are able to return back to school, or a negative PCR test. You know, I, I just, I think that we have such a stringent, we're following the guidelines very stringently right now, and there are, there are parents that feel strongly on both sides of this issue. There are parents that think, you know, that feel strongly that you shouldn't wear a mask and you should be able to come back when they decide that the symptoms are less enough. And then there's parents on the other side that feel that everybody should be wearing a mask, and that we should be going, you know, at whatever length it takes to ensure that there's a safety. So I think that, you know, as a community, we have to come together and, and come up with a compromise that makes sense for our school district. You know, I, I, I don't know what the answer is. The science continuously seems to change throughout this virus. The virus is morphing into, you know, with each variant, things change. And I think that we have to look at what is before us right now, and, and what is going to, you know, keep us open with in-person instruction, and have some type of, you know, guidelines for, for when students that tested positive for COVID can come back. Ms. Belko?
I hear what you say, Ms. Chanley, and Dr. Lehman, I agree, that is not a burden you want to put on the nurses. The, the nurses are wonderful, and they do know their job, but that's not within their scope of practice, okay? They're, they do not diagnose, and they do not do, do those things. They make assessments, and then they reach out to parents, and they let the parent make the decision, and that's the way it should be. The, if, obviously, if the child has a fever, they should not be in school. That has been a school rule forever. You cannot come to school if you've had a fever within 24 hours, and giving them a Tylenol at 7 o'clock in the morning and send them to school is not appropriate. My, I would tend to agree with Mrs. Bierman about this, that, you know, at the fifth day or sixth day, they come back, no testing, no note, they come back. As long as they're not sick, they come back. It is beyond comprehensionable that we are still doing this to our children, and that we are still going through this with everything that we are. We are currently still under a mandate for the next 90 days of masks, and with, with any help from God, we will be, be beyond this, and we won't need masks at all. And this will become part of, it is a part of our life, it will be a part of our life for a very long time, but we need to learn to live around it and not be fearful of every step we take.
Ms. Ratner?
So, just so, I wanted to clarify, because I came in right towards the mid of this, we're giving parents the option to keep them home for an additional five days on day six, or to send them back if their symptoms are lessening? Is that accurate? If they are...
Based upon the current recommendation that's on the table, that has to be voted on, it would be based upon if they return, on, they want to return on the sixth day, they would have to have lessening symptoms and no symptoms of the ones that would be inappropriate, like a fever, and they would either have to have a negative PCR test or some sort of doctor's verification.
Okay. Along these lines, and I don't know, I'm sure we don't have an exact number, but do we know roughly how much we've spent on home instruction over the last several months? I mean, I know over the last month or two, there have been a number of students absent. I know for a week, we were live streaming, but I'm just curious if that's affecting us from a financial perspective.
I, I mean, I could find you that information, I mean, that's something that we do on a regular basis, I discuss with Mr. Gorski, but at the same time, that did not factor into our decision. The financial amount of monies that were spent, it was a decision that was very difficult to make, and I respect the board's decision to either vote for or against it, but it was so hard to weigh in, if we, if the children come back on the sixth day with no, no conversation, parent is the adult, they're in charge of their child, child wakes up, child is fever-free, child, the symptoms have gotten a lot better, they want to send their child to school. I respect that, and I agree with that. The reason why I'm putting, trying, we are trying to put some sort of, as we move forward to becoming normal and living in the real world, the question is, in order for us to do our due diligence and do what is being asked of us, we would then have to place them at separate tables to eat at lunch, they would not be able to participate in the activities, unmasked, which cardiovascular, they do a lot in gym, they would have to remain masked when they are in certain areas, when other children are allowed to take their mask off, and additionally, the information would then have to be shared. So one of the things that I did want to bring up is that we'd have to, what's the word I'm looking for? We'd have to let it be known to those individuals that come in contact with the child, I mean the adults. So the teachers, the parents, the lunch aids, those children, we, they would, we would have to, I don't, and I, I'm trying to see how that would work, with, with the nurses being the main person, not to check them, but the nurse is always is in charge, they just are, they are in charge of the confidentiality and the children, that's just the way it works in the schools. So if the board, and the board makes the decisions, I just make a recommendation. So this was, for lack, and the public can, and I respect how they feel, but for lack of a better way, I had to make a decision, and I had to weigh both sides, because I, I think Ms. Skirby said it best, we have some people that feel like we're ready, we should, the mask should be off, back to school, it is what it is, this is what we live in. And then for every person I could think that feels that way, and I respect that, the, the opposite is, oh my goodness, we're getting there, but we're not there yet, we need to be masked, this is what we need to do. So that's why I have to, you know, make a determination, I did not do it in isolation. Dr. Lehman, I don't know if he wants to speak on the matter at all, which he's welcome to, we spoke with the nurses, we did, we looked at the literature, we, we looked at other districts. So for example, there is a, there's a consort of 27 districts that I'm on, that I meet with weekly. None of those districts, at the time, because this was over a week ago, said that they were going to allow anybody to return to sports until the 10th day, just for example. A lot of them say they are creating cafeterias with signs, and that's where the children are sitting. So, like I said, I know we're unique, we do try and be as close to some districts when appropriate. This was a decision I had to make, I respect the board's decision, and that is why I'm so glad that we have the power of 10 in this particular situation. I have to make the recommendation. I am, I feel comfortable with the recommendation, because I don't know what I don't know, and, and I know that may not be an answer for a leader, but I, I have to be forthright, and I have to say that I was trying to come to some, some medium, some midway logical point, and, and then, of course, the decision is the Board of Education's decision.
Of course. I mean, I was going to say, my other question, and I don't know what other districts are doing with this, but in regards to masks, and, you know, as we've all mentioned, there is an extreme, but one thing that's been discussed, especially among medical professionals with Omicron, is that cloth masks don't work, they're not nearly as effective. You know, to the point where I know the federal government is handing out free, I think, N95 starting this week. So whether or not we continue masks, which I know we, we have to based on mandates, is there anything stating that we're not just going to have them wearing masks for mass sake, that we would have them wearing the mask that they're deeming are more protective to help keep everyone safer? Like, if I'm going to have, you know, my, my child wearing a mask, I want it not just to be for decorative purposes, I want it to be to protect her, and...
So what I can say in regards to masks, because it's a parent's choice, what, and an adult's choice, what mask you wear. And it's always been that way. There are some people that will only wear an N95 from the very beginning, there are some people that wear a mask because they are compliant, so they have the mask on their face, and whether or not the mask is the appropriate mask, that is the determination of the adult. Of course, we do have masks in the school, that if a child needs a mask and forgets one, we provide it, absolutely, but the, the quality of protection based upon whether it be the CDC, or medical professionals, or a lot of people feel it's political, whatever it might be, is the decision of the parent. So that is, that would... So that is, that would not be a decision of the school district. The decision of the, of the school district based upon the Board of Education will be at one ti, at one ti, at the time that the mandate sunsets and it, and is not, or may be, continued, then it is the decision of the Board of Education to make a decision.
Ms. Arminia?
President Skirby? I'd just like to point out that, and thank you, Ms. Chanley, and everyone who's been, and this is torture, this, this, this whole procedure, because it is so fraught with so many different things. There is no right answer, folks. We don't, we are, we are not trying to annoy anyone, we are trying to protect our children as best as we know how, and even the professionals, you know, go around and around. But I need to point out that this is a mandated policy. We, we are obligated to do something. If we change it tonight, this will not be voted on. If we vote on it, and please, Ms. Gagely, order, you can step in at any time, if we vote on this tonight, we can still consider changing it for the next reading. And then when we come back next, which is our next, and it's, it's a closer meeting, right? So it's only like a window of two weeks or so. We can make the changes if that's what the committee seeks, or, you know, if we get input and the administration recommends it. But I think this was a grueling procedure to go through and we are mandated to do something. So I, I don't know if that, if that's how people feel, but just wanted to point that out.
I just want to say, I agree with everything that has been communicated in terms of it's a dynamic process, it's something that, there's, it's a lose-lose situation for everyone involved. I think my mindset, when I contribute to the conversations, my mindset when I look at the information, is as we sit here today, and I think I can remember explicitly, right before Thanksgiving, saying we're heading in a pretty good place, right? And then all of a sudden, we had this thing come up, right? And really, Thanksgiving came, we, it was a different world. Now we're on the downhill slide again. I believe we are in a transition phase and what I think, where I think we are is, as fast as we have to respond to something that happens, right? Another variant or whatever comes in front of us, we have to be willing to unravel those things so there's an incentive to go back to them for the good of the greater good. And certain things right now, we're limited. There's a mask mandate, that is a must and is not a choice for us. Other things are shoulds, we should do this and we should do that. And that's where we have the latitude, whether we should have the ability to choose that latitude or not, we should be directed to be told that. None of us here are the, the doctors on the front lines. So we're, we're using the information that we get from all of our multiple sources and making a decision that's what we believe to be in the best interest of the community. And again, it's weighing both sides of the situation. So the things that are the musts are the masks and that's what we have to do. These other shoulds are the things we're trying to balance, like you said, the SEL side, the best social emotional piece for the majority of the students. But I want everyone to know that we are, our mindset is to move to a different direction as soon as we can and as soon as it's safe, because if we need to pivot back to this next December again or something, we can have this in our back pocket and everyone can say, if we put it up, we take it off, right? We put the masks up, we can take the masks off. It's kind of a response piece. I think a lot of the issue right now is there is no perceived end to this. You know, I think people maybe would be more willing to occasionally put on a mask if they said, I knew, we're good for a month, I can do this for a month and then it's over. And that's kind of where some of these latitude decisions that we're looking at as a district, are we going to connect something to the Cali scale? That means there's an end to it, right? Right now, there's no end to the mask piece. We can ask the governor, he doesn't tell us what metric he's looking for to change this mask mandate. Well, if we put something in place, then we have an end to what we're looking for once we have the opportunity. So that's kind of where we are in terms of our mindset. We're not looking to perpetuate this any longer than we have to. But our priority is the safety for the kids. And, and the science is clear, it's, at least right now, you're most contagious two days prior to symptoms and three days after onset of symptoms. This naturally has a buffer built into it, so we understand that. But then the other things that come into play when you bring the students back, that's where the, that's where the, the issues we have are. You know, the segregation and separation, the restrictions and things like that. So, you know, I understand, I read a lot about the science, again, I'm not in the medical field, but it's part of my role to just kind of be on top of this. And I understand the science, I understand the buffer, but we all have to change our mindset. When this first thing started, we didn't want to get it because we were afraid something bad was going to happen. This new variant is, is in a different place. You know, for many people, it doesn't end that way. And I think that's where our mindset changes, that's where the medical mindset's changing, that's why things are shortening in terms of quarantines. And we're living this pandemic in real life. Those are, there's going to be movies about this. We're all going to look back and say, you know, that was a long two years because we lived it every day, but that movie's going to be two hours, we're going to say, hey, I remember that, I remember that meeting that lasted four hours, right? And it's just a blip on the radar when we look back. So I think, you know, that's our mindset when we look at and we try and make these decisions.
Katie?
So I just have two questions. The first question is, is I don't see anywhere where, why would we need to quarantine or to separate the children coming back? I'm not understanding the reasoning behind that. And then my other question is, the, the dynamics of this have changed numerous times since this began two years ago, January of 2020. We, you know, that's pretty much where it began. So I'm not quite understanding, we've changed how we've done things over and over again without having to change the policy. So I'm very, like, because now, from the way I'm hearing it explained, is we could vote on this tonight, but it won't change for another month. So between now and another month, the, the whole thing could change again and the governor could say, okay, we're going to take masks off, we don't need to quarantine and we're good to go. So I'm not understanding why we, you know, we've had the previous administration, we didn't have this, it was just brought to us and we, you know, based on their recommendations and based on the guidance, is it because it's now become wishy-washy and they've left it up to the LEA? Karen shaking her head, is that what's going on?
Well, that's part of, but, but the other, this is what was brought to me and, and if we want, we could have Mr. Gagely already speak on it. I also didn't understand, because the other districts don't have this as a policy.
Right, right, that's, that's my question is...
Pre, pre me?
Because we could be doing this for mute right now, because tomorrow morning, we could wake up and somebody could say, everything has changed.
Correct. So the reason why it was brought to a policy is because it was my understanding, and you can speak on this, sir, it was my understanding that the superintendent can make a recommendation and that's what gets voted on, but in our district of Monroe Township, there was an existing policy that would not allow the change to be made by the acting superintendent, whomever that person was, whether it be me or someone else. So it was brought to my attention that I couldn't supersede a policy and therefore it had to come up this way. That was the first, that was the second question. The first question, Dr. Lehman, if you want to talk on it, but we could speak on it, him and I have been going back and forth, so I'm going to let him just finish up about the segregation piece. And I think those were your two questions.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
So the recommended guidance on, on day six is for these additional five school days, so that would be days six through 10, schools should have a plan to ensure adequate distance during those activities, i.e. eating, when mask-wearing is not possible. Time without mask worn should be kept to a minimum on day six through 10, limit participation in extracurricular activities to only those where masks can be worn consistently and correctly. So that's the guidance from the DOE. That's not in the policy, Ms. Belko?
I'm looking at the policy that we're voting on, it's not in the policy.
No, it's in the CDC guidelines that are coming.
That's the guidance from the CDC. So what we did in terms of not implementing that aspect of it, is if you're cleared, you come back, you don't have to worry about that.
Correct. That's why I said no limitations. So we wouldn't have to worry about the shoulds because the limitations would be moot because you've been cleared to come back and therefore we assume that you are COVID-free.
When you're healthy, you're healthy.
When you're healthy, you're healthy.
Can we speak for the first half?
Yes, please, thank you, sir.
So as to the reason this is before the board is because, in essence, only the board can undo that which the board did. So you needed a vote because you took it out of the superintendent's hands and this vote keeps it in the board's hands. There are some districts, quite frankly, I think this is inevitable for your district, given the changing nature of this virus and how it affects populations, is boards eventually are, are going to go back to what policies generally do, which is to set guidelines and leave things in the hands of your chief school administrator. Not that it isn't fun to do this every few months because that's what it's going to be, but I, I think that's essentially where you're going. And you see, one example of that, where there was gray area, namely this practice, which is what most districts are doing, which is where the superintendent says, look, we understand that we have the freedom to segregate children under certain circumstances and have like a separate lunch table for, for certain kids and all, and most educators realize that that's inappropriate. Again, your superintendent would be giving the direction to principals, here's what we're doing, and she would be informing the board as opposed to something like this, but the board has taken control of certain aspects of this issue, at least for the time being, you're stuck with it. I think it's inevitability that you're going to divest yourself with some general guidelines. You mentioned an excellent one during, I think, your first question, which is, we're spending all this time talking about what sort of symptoms keep you out of school, right? Forever. You couldn't come to school within 24 hours of having a fever. And yet we're talking about it at the board level as if, you know, we're inventing a, a new formula. We're not. So I, unfortunately, you're stuck with this, but I, I think just as the virus evolves, the board's handling of this needs to evolve. And that evolution will be to set general guidelines and leave things in the hands of your administration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Boras, that are...
It's on the same topic. Thank you, Paul. As we deliberate on this, I just had a comment that when we talk about how inappropriate it would be to separate the students, I also want to add the perspective of this added work on our teachers. I feel like these two years have been, you know, extremely difficult for our educators, not speaking for you, Katie, but if we go to the, the route where we don't ask for a doctor's note or a piece, a negative PCR, and we start to, you know, segregate them, that's one more thing that the teachers have to take care of. And it's not going to be easy, not just physically, even, you know, mentally, just the, the fact that you have to single a six-year-old out and make him sit on a different table. I, I feel like if we could just get a doctor's note, which is easier than a negative PCR, I will admit, these days, just so that the teachers don't have to go through an added button. So as we deliberate as a board, I would want everybody to think about the teachers.
They would still need to be segregated with the doctor's note coming back.
No, no. No, they would not.
The CDC says that you still have to wear a mask, day six through 10.
Well, of course they have to wear a mask, but they can, because we have confirmed...
And not participate in extracurricular activities, anywhere where banned and spores, it's right there.
That's what, that's what Mr., Dr. Lehman was trying to explain, is the shoulds versus the mandates. It's a should, they're saying if you come back, you should be doing this. And the recommendation, from what I gathered, was if we are bringing them back with no negative PCR or no doctor's note, that the recommendation would be the shoulds.
Correct.
But now we're picking and choosing and we're saying, we're just making up the PCR test on return, that's not in there.
Karen, get closer to her mic.
We created this PCR test on return, that's not part of the guidance. So now we're picking and choosing what we're going to should and what we're going to not should again, and that's what's going to be highly unlikely to be able to be adopted and implemented because we're just...
If I may respond to that?
We're not being consistent with what we're picking and choosing.
If I may respond to that? So I wasn't here under the previous administration and, and that's when this was taken out of the superintendent's hands and was made a policy, but I did come to the meetings, I am, I was a principal in the district, so I bear, I bear the responsibility. We are picking and choosing, I agree with you 100% and I'll tell you why. The only way that we're going to be able to handle dealing with this is either it's, it's almost like all or nothing, because if you go with the all and we say, recommendations are the shoulds, and they say, everybody comes back six days, make sure they sit separately, make sure they're not near, within six feet of any other child, make sure when they take off their mask to eat, make sure, make sure, make sure. There, in order for us to do our conscientiousness for what's best for all, because we, I'm a mother, but these aren't my children, but they are my all, so I don't worry about my own children, I'm worrying about everybody's child, we are picking and choosing, because if we don't pick and choose, then my recommendation would be, like many districts, have the kids wait till 10 days and that's the way it is. So, and that is not what's best for children, especially because we keep to that philosophy of thought and we keep to that continuum, that includes the children that are not vaccinated and therefore are close contacts. So child who has no symptoms, never been sick, but because they're not vaccinated, can't come to school. So this is the, the best of the worst situation that we're looking at, and Ms. Bierman, you're absolutely right, so we were picking and choosing. So when Dr. Lehman and I, and we spoke with the nurses and we did, bringing this to the administration, and we're going to talk about it at the leadership meeting, we started to say, okay, everybody comes back on the sixth day, what does that mean? The nurses now are going to be responsible? Well, there are certain school districts that are having nurses meet the children and the parents on the evening, literarily, on the evening of the fifth night, to then do an examination. And, and as Ms. Belko, you know, pointed out, that is not the job responsibility of a school nurse. So then we started saying, okay, and we started thinking out of the box, because my goal, as you know, the schools are open, and the schools weren't open only when it was transportation, we are open, we are in school every day, is to keep us in school. So this was like the best of the worst scenario in my recommendation. Once again, yes, I bear the responsibility of making the recommendation, you know, good or bad, I, I just have to be able to sleep at night and this is the best recommendation, to find, to say away that there's some form of security. And there is never a form of security, we all know that. You can get COVID more than once, people have gotten it two or three times, we understand all that. And we know that the science is the science, but things are constantly changing. So we had to make a decision and we did pick and choose, you're absolutely right. So we did pick and choose so that we would have nobody excluded.
What science was used to think about implementing the PCR test negative on return is the qualification to come in rather than it just being day six and symptom-free?
We wanted something substantial because we knew that they just can't come back, there has to be some sort of nurse...
But why? The CDC is saying you can move about the cabin on day six if you're symptom-free. So we made a decision that we don't believe that, that we want to see a PCR before we reintegrate them into the population again. Why? Other than CDC, what did we use that pointed us in the direction of choosing that instead of the CDC?
Because we go with the CDC, I think we're saying the same thing, if we go with the CDC, then we have to have a plan of how to segregate the children. So the PCR test is just something that's always been out there, a medical professional, not the school nurse, says, your symptoms have improved to the extent that they should, there's no fever, you can come back. So that is the only reason why.
Ms. Rettner? I was going to say, I, I kind of understand what Ms. Bierman is, is saying, is if we're following the CDC guidelines for certain things, why are we not following them for everything, or why can we, you know, choose to not follow them for anything? You know, myself, I'm not an expert, a medical expert, I don't know this stuff. You know, not, most of us up here are not, not all of us. But if I'm going to listen to someone who knows this stuff, I don't understand why we wouldn't just be following the recommendations that they're giving. Otherwise, you know, it's sort of like I'm making up, you know, we're making up our own rules based on, you know, experience that we don't necessarily have.
So I'm going to explain, because I think this is the part that's getting lost. All along, and like I said, I wasn't in this role, but I remembered the policy, all along, we follow the Department of Health, but we, we bear the responsibility of following the, as many shoulds, because that's what it is, it's possible, by the Department of Education. So if we don't, if we say, the CDC is the master of all, sixth day we come back, we have to have a plan that is doable. It's easy to say without, let me rephrase that, it is not as easy to have an understanding unless you work in the daily operations of the building. If we're going to, to put in a plan of action that makes it as safe, remember, it's, it's these conditions, what does that mean? I don't know what that means, but as safe, that we feel as safe for our children to return to school from day six to 10, and the plan of action on the shoulds from the Department of Education is the segregation of children, no athletes returning on the sixth day, and so forth.
So that's Department of Education, not Department of Health?
Correct. So we felt comfortable, and I'm not making up anything as I go along by any means. We, I, I have to come up with a decision, a decision has to be made. And half the room's going to be very unhappy and the other half the room's going to be thrilled, half the room's going to be very unhappy, the other half the room's going to be thrilled. So we thought, and, and I am not a medical professional in any way whatsoever, we thought that since a PCR test has been a measurer, a measure of negativity... we thought that since a PCR test has been a measurer, a measure of negativity, not because Mrs. Chanley said so, not because Dr. Lehman said so.
You can test positive for weeks and months after.
Excuse me, can I ask for the audience members to please be respectful while the board deliberates? Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Fabiano, excuse me. You are out of order. Please, if you cannot be quiet, we're going to have to ask you to leave. Go ahead, Mrs. Beerman.
I'm sorry. The PCR test, you can test positive many, many days, weeks, even months after you're symptom-free and pass the quarantine period. So it's not a good measure. So that's my question is where did we come up with? Who guided us to make that recommendation to use the PCR test as a measure? Because there's, it's contradictory. It doesn't hold order.
That is why, you're absolutely correct. And because it is, because there is so much contradiction, although there are many other organizations that do utilize it, quite frankly, that's why we also said, or a medical note. So you take your child to the doctor, the doctor says, I'm very pleased with the symptoms as they have improved. Your child is symptom-free. It's the sixth day, you come back to school.
Do we have any feedback from local pediatricians on where they stand on that? Did we speak with anybody?
No.
Does anybody have any other questions? Comments? No?
So it's up to the board when we get to that point.
Okay.
I believe, Ms. Arminio, the, within that policy, one of the changes, I think, that we had discussed or we had mentioned was at the end, putting language in there that would in the future allow the superintendent or the administration to take action without having to wait for further board meeting.
That was the intention, yes.
To alleviate the issues that Mrs. Belko was indicating of having to wait until the board votes for the second reading.
And that's what I said in my committee report. The policy committee approved the recommendations from the administration with the understanding that the policy remains open to the administration revision as necessary for the health and safety of the district, to give them the fluidity. Because everyone's right, tomorrow, things can change. And with that change, so will the district. I mean, it's impossible. And when I said we would have to wait a month to change the black and white writing, that doesn't mean we would have to wait to change the actual actions that the administration is taking. I think that that's what we're trying to get to.
It actually saves us from having an emergency board meeting.
Exactly. Exactly.
I do just have one more question.
Sure.
In the policy, we're talking about masks and using the CALI score as a determination. And maybe I just, I'm not sure, but why would we not use the rate of transmission versus the CALI score? Like, right now, our rate of transmission is very low. It's .5, .58, I believe. And our CALI is still showing us as red. So I don't, I'm just, I don't know if there's a reason why we're using the CALI score or the rate of transmission. I just want some perspective on that.
I think everything kind of goes into the decision-making process. The CALI score is updated weekly and it looks back on the previous week. And it factors in three different, you know, case COVID-like illness, positivity rate, and then one other indicator. The retransmission rate is updated daily. And you'll see, even if we're in green, that may go up to 1.2, 1.3, but we're still in green, right? Because once you get the small numbers, if twice as many people get sick and there's only 50 people sick, there's a real fluctuation in that number as opposed to the kind of broader look and less volatility in that CALI score piece. I think that's really kind of the, at least the perspective I see. Yeah, the retransmission rate now is .58 or some ridiculously, we haven't seen that in a long while.
Yeah, I just feel like a lot of people are seeing the transmission rate as low as it is and, you know, a lot wanting to get rid of masks already, that, you know, you see the transmission rate being so low and this is supposed to prevent reduced transmission. You know, that was.
Yeah, less people giving it to each other, that means the cases will simultaneously kind of come down. And then everything else that lags as an indicator catches up to that. So that's, I think that's why they only do that CALI report weekly, is because they want a little bit less volatile number. And so the cases were a little bit up today. They were in the 4,000s the past two days, 6,000 today. Those are really like impacted by holidays, they're impacted by the weekends, right? Less people go to get tested. Only people that feel really sick on the weekends go, whereas people, everybody goes on Mondays. So there's a lot of volatility in those numbers, whereas that weak, long picture is a little bit, at least from my perspective, that's all.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
We're done with that conversation.
He has another topic he wants to talk about.
Now I got to remind myself, give me a second. So if I could speak to the bylaw 0141.2 and if I could actually hopefully get Mr. Gagliardi's thoughts on this, clarification really more so. So in number three on page one, it talks about the 10% threshold of sending students to the overall population of high school. And then on page two, towards the bottom, it talks about the calculation of percentages based on the number of students as of the last day, basically on October 15. So that's like the line when we take this snapshot. So just for clarification purposes, on October 15 of 2021, we had roughly, well, no, we had exactly 2,510 high school students. I believe we had 255 Jamesburg students. By my math, that's more than 10%. So I just want to be clear that this is now, does not need to be a discussion every month about how many students of Jamesburg come to the high school. Because as a representative of Jamesburg here to the board, am I right that that is now set until next October?
Yeah, Madam President, would you like me to respond?
Sure, yes.
Yeah, so what you have with that policy and the other policy regarding the voting rights are simply policies that reflect state law. So they're very boring in the sense that there's no debate. You're either going to follow the law or you're not. And in that case, the snapshot is taken based upon the October 15 date, the old ASSA form when the population is submitted. Whether you're aware of it or not, the board secretary gets a letter from the Department of Education that says Jamesburg sent this many students on the ASSA forms. This is how many are reflected at that high school.
Absolutely familiar with that form.
They're entitled to a representative who has the voting rights consistent with statute. So it's not up to the board. The board doesn't look at it every month, they can't.
Let's be clear, the board does look at it every month.
No, they can't look.
They don't have to, but they do.
The board can look at the population. What they're not looking at is the Jamesburg representative ability to participate. That's established by law. They get a letter, Department of Education says you're entitled to a vote, and that's the way it is until another year elapses.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify it for the board and for the public. And hopefully until October 15, we can let this rest.
Ms. Beerman?
Are you looking to make a motion to remove that data element from the agenda every month?
Not at all. I don't mind that it's there, I just mind that you ask for it to be there every month. That's all, I find it offensive.
Ms. Ratner?
I wanted to bring up a question about the policy 8310, the public records. And I had watched the meeting just because I was curious, you know, why there was a change being made. You know, and I can totally understand the idea of wanting to get a handle on what type of information the community is looking for. I guess my question is, why not make it a collaborative effort between both offices? You know, this would require training additional people. And then, you know, I feel as though between the business office and the superintendent's office, a decision can be made whether or not it would need to go to attorney review. I just feel, you know, more eyes is always a good thing. I'm just not sure if there was anything else that went into it. But yeah, I guess why not just have, you know, two people responsible with the two alternates for that?
So for purpose of that particular area, it would, it would actually, it actually makes more sense for it to be one person. And you're absolutely right. It's about having an understanding of what the requests are in the district, about always being kept in the loop. So keeping it within the superintendent's office allows myself or whomever it would be there if I'm not there, to have an understanding of what the needs of the community are. Because the Open Records Act is a very important, very appropriate law that exists to allow the public, which is who we serve, to have an opportunity to question and look at anything that is appropriate. And I think that more times than none, if we follow the law, we would not bring in the attorneys, no disrespect to Joe, nor would we bring in the courts, because a lot of it is very straightforward. I think sometimes too many cooks in the kitchen cannot, is not necessarily a good thing. And I think it gives an opportunity by keeping it in one environment and one location so that I could be kept abreast of all the information. And as far as the training, I think the training is something that's done through school boards and it's something very attainable.
And it's not, just so I know, because, you know, I'm not well-versed in this, it's not something you could be, like, I guess, CC'd on in regards to knowing what's being requested so that you are aware or whoever is in that position?
What had hap, what has happened in the 75 days that I've been currently there? I am CC'd on many, but I am not CC'd on all. And I don't know what I don't know if I don't know that I'm supposed to be CC'd on something. So therefore, I would not know consistently what's asked for and what's not asked for because it's not in my office.
Okay. Any other questions? And if I could, going back to the bylaw that Mr. Rutske had mentioned, Mr. Gagliardi, if I could ask you to explain the reasoning behind the changes for outlining what the specification is for when there's nine members and when there's 10 members?
Sure, thank you, Madam President. So that recommendation, again, nice and boring, right, is that the law was changed in 2017 to, in some respects, expand and in other respects, define the voting rights of a sending district representative. So based upon changes in statute and case law, that has varied and been the subject of dispute, not necessarily here, but I mean statewide. And so what you're really doing there is making it clear when the sending representative can vote. And were you to look, you know, whether it's at your agenda or your minutes, it's not clear from the way you've been doing it when that individual's vote counts and doesn't count. And the example that I used during my brief discussion with Mr. Rutske before the meeting is this. Without a clear policy and without a clear agenda and clear minutes, it's not clear to the public what is going on. So let's say there are two board members absent or recused. And they see a vote on a personnel matter, five in favor and three against. That's a middle school teacher, that vote passes. If it's a high school teacher, that vote fails. How in the world would the public understand when they see a 5-3 vote with five in favor that there are times when that is a positive vote and times when it's a negative vote? The answer is they wouldn't. And there are cases, not specifically on that issue, but for example, there are districts that have had the election of officers be handled by paper ballot. And they have, those elections have been overturned by the commissioner with the argument being that the public is entitled to know who's doing what and what's going on. And the way this is set up, that is not the case. So the policy makes it clear when the representative can vote and the way the agenda is set out and the way the votes are taken makes it clear to the public when that board member is exercising that and when you're operating as a board of 10 or as a board of nine.
Thank you. And I know that I did, for purposes of that, ask for this agenda to reflect that. It is not reflective of that. Could you explain what you had recommended as far as how the agenda should be set up to make sure that the public is aware of how we're voting?
Sure. So I have had opportunity to represent boards like, well, there's no board like yours, but I mean, boards, boards that are similar where you have a nine-person board and a sending district representative. And so either by having, I'll use the personnel section because I think that's the most illustrative. So if you have 20 personnel matters and 10 pertain to high school issues and 10 don't, you could have that bifurcated, you could have asterisks there. You can still conduct the roll call the same way, but if you set up the agenda properly, I'm not asking you to vote on everything separately. I'm saying that if the agenda is clear and the resulting minutes are clear, it will be clear when there's a 10-person board voting, and if we stay with personnel, when you would need six affirmative votes for something to be adopted. And then when you're acting as a nine-person board and you only need five affirmative votes to be adopted. So I think once you set up the agenda properly and once the minutes are more reflective of it, it would not impact the flow of the board meeting. It would simply allow the board and the public to understand who's voting and what it means.
Okay, thank you. So I'll request again for the next meeting in February for our agenda to be set up in that manner.
So just one, if I may just follow up on that?
Sure.
So I have it all detailed out for tonight. We'll go over it, it's what we used to do seven years ago or six years ago, whatever. But Mr. Gagliardi, you've been the board general counsel for now in your second year. And this is just coming to light now, just curious. Didn't get away with anything. It's not, it's not that exciting.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Mr. Gagliardi, may I answer that first?
You may go first, sure.
Sure, Michelle, go ahead.
Since I have a history on this board for that, years ago, when there are different boards, different members, that was the case that we had asked the administration to make those distinctions. And it was, it was followed. And I think even at one time when you first got here, you were handed every more, every time. And then when the board changed and that was still requested, it didn't occur.
It was probably the 2017 adjustment you were talking about. It's probably when we made the adjustment.
Well, so let me, so let me finish. So it was, that was the excuse, not the real reason. It, so when, when board members after that asked for that to continue, it was not, it was, it was not continued. So to ask him why it's happening now, it has always been the request of members of the board, including myself, that there was a clear delineation. But when we did not get cooperation from previous administrations and previous board members, it didn't happen. So, you know, shame on us.
Just curious, thank you.
I have not been in the habit of reviewing your minutes because that's not what I'm asked to do. But when the board president, in looking at the way the agendas were set up and said, you know, we have this sort of catch-all language in the agendas and we talked about it, she made it clear to me that despite that language in the agendas, the minutes do not make any delineation. I was not aware of that, nor was I aware of the history that Mrs. Arminio just described. So when I was made aware of the way that the minutes are recorded, I explained that I don't think, I, we talked about the policy. So then it was clear, not only were the minutes improper, but you weren't even in compliance with state law. So I can only help the board address that of which I am aware. When I was made aware of it, we came up with a plan to fix it. And that's the plan we're talking about this evening.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Just to finish, maybe to be clear. So it had been previously instituted, again, with other boards and other majorities. And then when things switched, it went back to where it was untenable. And requests had been made by individuals, but without a majority to bring it forward, it was really just dismissed, unfortunately. But I think it's better for everybody to know, you know, and follow the law for goodness sake.
Yes.
Correct, it's not radical.
Thank you.
Okay, does that conclude your summary?
I thought I did that a half hour ago.
Are there any other committee reports? Okay, Mrs. Beerman, finance report?
We had our first finance meeting of the year, committee meeting on Wednesday, January 19, 2022. Ken Chirella was named our vice chair. And also in attendance and part of the committee for the year will be Addie Nikotinsky, Katie Belko, and Madam President is their ex officio. First item of business was a monthly review of attorney fees. And there was no discussion on that item, but I can share that the November invoice was $15,374. Second item was a discussion on utilizing myschoolbox.com. They had indicated that they would be increasing their fee, pretty much effective immediately, on technology and AP fees to 4.95% and holding steady with their $2.75 per transaction fee on, when you put money on for meals. We asked Mr. Gorski and his team to look into it and see if there were competitors and, you know, if there are any other options to myschoolbox.com. They found them all to be. They found them all to be reasonably in the same ballpark, couple of action items that we had. From there is a request to go back to myschoolbox.com and see if we can raise the ceiling from $120 to $500, so that you could have less $2.75 transaction fees throughout the education of your child if you choose to use myschoolbox.com, and also to raise awareness, and an email did go out to parents to remind them that you can bypass myschoolbox.com and use cash and check sending into the school to put it on account for meals. Third item on the agenda was a discussion about using Fast Sport, a Monroe business, to engage a contract for substitute athletic trainers to be available in case our in-district staff were not available for the different events they have. At this time, the committee was uncomfortable recommending this initiative to move forward, so we'll circle back on that if necessary. The fourth item was the Jamesburg tuition adjustment. The numbers were done, the business office to come with, up with the 2021 per pupil tuition rate, which came in at $14,063.55. And based on the numbers that Jamesburg overpays on purpose for the number of students they send, as well as the number they put in the budget for the tuition rate, the liability was brought down in that period by $561,922.40, which leaves us with a balance of $722,528.37. And Mr. Gorski says that it is on schedule, the repayment of that liability, and is anticipated to be fully satisfied in the next two years, if not sooner. And the last item was a budget update. Mr. Gorski gave members a brief update for the 2223 budget, which is in the early stage of progress. Appropriations from the various schools and departments are being consolidated and revenues projected. There are still large accounts without projections, and the budget will continue to be refined through the state aid release. Back on the Jamesburg tuition adjustment item, we did have two additional conversations during that topic. One was to discuss the transportation piece, which is separate from the tuition piece, and so every month there are invoices sent, an invoice sent, and transportation costs are recouped moving forward. Committee asked to be provided with the backup for that, showing the invoices that are being sent and watching the numbers there. There's no issues or problems with it, it's just an oversight item. And the second item was that the addressed data of the students that are identified as Jamesburg was reviewed, and there were some minor anomalies with the addressed data that were addressed and corrected, and everything is all good and on track there. Thank you.
Mr. Rutske?
May I? Thank you. So I just, I want to just start, I'll work, start at the back and go forward. So, that one anomaly, for the record, let's be clear for the public, that was somebody that was marked as a Jamesburg student that wasn't really a Jamesburg student. So that one, through your audit, you found there was one, it was an overcharge of one Jamesburg stu-, or overcounting of one Jamesburg student that was really a Monroe address. So, just so everybody's understanding that, it's not, you know, sneaky Jamesburgs hiding kids. There was one student that actually is from Monroe that was being counted as Jamesburg, so that's a correction. Number two, yes, the schedule is basically on, on schedule, and I use the word basically because, A, I wasn't there to put this, the agreement together, but I know there were calculations that were used to sort of assume or hope that it was going to be a seven-year window, so it's turning out to be either an eight or a nine, depending on your timeframe. That said, we, this was the 2020, 2021 school year. So, Mr. Gorski mentioned, and when I watched it on the video, a roughly an $80,000 increase in the 2122 budget for Jamesburg. So what that is, it's actually 82,500. So what we're doing is we're increasing from $14,900 per student up to $15,200 in the 2122 budget.
And we expect the 1463 to decrease?
We hope, we hope. I don't know. I think 1463 might have been anomaly because of COVID. I wouldn't be shocked if it goes up a little bit next year, hopefully not too much. But we are growing that by $300, keeping the 275 students. So, $4,180,000 is what we have budgeted for the 2122 school year. We'll know that this time next year, how that works out. I guess for the time being, that's all I have.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Gorski?
Just a point of correction on the repayment schedule in accordance with the agreement. The first year that the agreement went into effect was for school budget year 15, 16. That was year one. 16, 17 was year two, 17, 18 was three, 18, 19 was four, 19, 20 was five, 2021, which we presented is number six. So next year is number seven. There's a possibility that this could be satisfied next year in year number seven. Worst case, it could linger in, beyond the projected seven-year schedule by a year. That was the latest projection. I said probably two years, but it could be satisfied in one. So this could, very surprisingly, exactly hit within the parameters that were just anticipated long in advance of knowing how the Monroe tuition rate was going to decline and how the enrollment was going to shape up over seven years. So that is, of course, you know, I was involved with the design, but that is a very accurate actual result, that we are maybe heading one year over or may hit it right on the nose. Thank you.
Is there anything that would have to be done in advance of that year seven in order to extend that contract, or it's just a friendly agreement at that point?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
There's nothing that has to be done, it was just a projected schedule. And Jamesburg is doing everything that they can to expedite the payment. They're way over what the legal agreement requires as far as paying the tuition rate, and they're also way over as far as estimating the number of students. Both of those variables are contributing to the $561,000 overpayment, and they're contributing even more of a tuition rate going forward. So, they're priming the pump as much as they can to get this out as quickly as possible.
Does anybody have any other questions for the finance committee? Are there, Ms. Belko?
I just have one statement. So, if that's the case, next year, if Jamesburg does meet the end and they have everything moving forward, they will only be paying the tuition that they're due us. So, we need to make sure that we factor that in, and I'm sure Mr. Gorski will do that, but we need to make sure, we need to understand that we will not be getting.
The extra.
I don't want to call it extra money, it's money that we didn't have previously, that we now have had in our budget. So we have to be cautious and aware that in one to two years, and if they, you know, for their sake, I hope that they, you know, they meet their obligation by next year, which would be a year early, but I just want to make sure that we, as a board, understand that when we start looking at our budget for 22, 23, 23, 24.
Anybody else? Are there any other committees to report?
Yeah, I'd like to go.
I have one, Mr.
No, Ken, you're not going to go. Sorry.
Yes, Ken is on, yes. Mr. Chiarella, if I could, just I asked you to wait one moment while Mr. Nikotinsky does the personnel report.
I'll be short and sweet, I promise.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, so the personnel committee met on January 19th. We reviewed the vacancy list, the exit survey, and then the, it was recommended by administration that we raise the pay of the substitute teacher to be competitive with surrounding districts from 115 to 140 a day. We reviewed the organizational chart, we reviewed a bunch of personnel matters, and it was updated, sidebar update for the MTA was updated for two hours max a day. So, and that was it. That's it.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Nikotinsky?
I do, Mr. Kirby.
Okay. Mr. Chiarella?
Yes. Can you tell me, from what I remember from the meeting, we also had a limit for that pay increase, which I believe was June. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that all, Mr. Chiarella? Yes, and I think that may have to be updated.
It was.
Oh, okay. Yes. All right, that has been updated, Mr. Chiarella.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
I don't, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Nikotinsky? No? All right, Mr. Chiarella, would you like to give the BGNT committee update?
Yes, thank you. So I just want to apologize for not being there. I'm fine, but just the law requires that I not attend with Omicron. So I just wanted to thank, you know, thank you for allowing me to, to do this remotely. We had a buildings grounds and transportation meeting on the 20th of this month at 8 o'clock at the high school. We reviewed six items. We discussed the stadium track and field restoration project meeting, and we looked at the bids and decided to go with a bid that included additional, the additional long jump and vault area. And this will be brought to the board tonight for review and for a vote. As you saw tonight as well, the second item was that we had a presentation from the DI group who reviewed with us everything that you saw tonight. What I'd like to just mention, though, is that we had several administrators from the, from our, all of our schools who, that are impacted with this redevelopment and these additions. And we, and we were able to hear their thoughts and perspectives on what we were reviewing, which I thought was very helpful and gave us a lot of, you know, a lot of different perspectives on what we're planning to do here. And that is, you know, that was discussed tonight, but at the meeting, I think we spent maybe almost three hours discussing this. So, it was, I thought it was a very good plan, but, you know, I, we're a board of the hall, so I'm glad that everybody was able to see it tonight. The third, the third thing that we discussed was the multi-sensory room and the self-contained classroom projects at the Monroe Township Middle School, and DI group, again, presented the plans for those projects, and that also will be on the agenda for vote by the full board tonight. We also, we discussed the Barclaybrook Art Room Conversion for Special Education and the needs at Barclaybrook School. Mr. Tagg explained the project to us, and we looked at the schematics, and we have to, that would be, have to be submitted to the DOE. Mr. Tagg also said that this could be a capital project. The next thing that we discussed was Monroe Commons status, so the building's being sold, the lease is up in May. We have, we use three suites in that building. Mrs. Chanley, though, what we came up with is that Mrs. Chanley will reach out to the Jamesburg superintendent to explore the possibility of extra space they may have for our staff that occupied the Monroe Commons building. So, I look forward to seeing and hearing what that discussion brings and to see if we have any possibilities. And, you know, to be honest, we discussed looking at maybe working with an arrangement with Jamesburg on the debt in, in exchange for maybe finding room for people personnel services and the, and our various entities that are currently in Monroe Commons. And then, last but not least, Adi Nikotinsky was named as the vice chair of the BGNT committee. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Chiarella on BGNT? Seeing none, okay. Thank you very much, Ken. We hope you feel better.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other committee reports? I think that is, that concludes our committee reports. Okay. The next item on the agenda is our public forum. It is for agenda items only. If you wish to come and make comment, please give your name and address, and your time is limited to four minutes. Do we have anybody from the public who would like to speak?
Hi, Michelle Scott, Seven Fernwood Lane, Jamesburg, New Jersey. I'm also a board event member with Jamesburg. As you were discussing, the debt that we owe to Monroe, I just wanted to make some comments, and I also viewed the finance committee meeting that was held last week. I just want a voice that I sensed an undercurrent of some hostility in regards to the Jamesburg tuition settlement, the current balance that is owed, and our board's agreement of paying down the balance by the term agreed, as well as some of the dissension in regards to our payments for the busing for our students in Jamesburg. There was just this undercurrent note that I got while watching that video. I'd like to point out that on February 10th of 2021 last year, there was a Board of Education Monroe meeting, or Monroe Board of Education Finance Committee meeting that was held, where all of this was hashed out and discussed in great deal in length, the whole history of the settlement with the Supreme Court, how the payment schedule was, breaking it down from when it was agreed back in 2015. This was hashed out in length, and I know several board members that are currently on this board were in that meeting. I, I attended virtually, as well as Carrie Ann Holster, who was also part of the finance committee last year, and Paul Rutske were invited to attend that. So that was hashed out over a year ago in nauseam, okay? And we're still, you're still continuing to bring it up. So...
Can I just interrupt you for a minute? Madam President?
No, Michelle.
No, everybody else be quiet. We can't, out of respect for the speaker, the audience is making too much noise.
Oh, I'm sorry. If we could please keep the noise to a minimum while we have our speaker at public forum?
Thank you, Mrs. Arminio. And thank you, Ms. Kirby. So, I just wanted to, you know, say that I'd like to point out that our students in Jamesburg are an asset to Monroe. We add to the cultural diversity. We have students that achieve great academic success. We have students that are very active in the sports and arts programs. I, myself, have two sons that have been star athletes in Monroe's football and lacrosse programs. My current senior was not only the, one of the captains on last season's football team, but he's a captain of this season's lacrosse team. So I think we've, you know, Jamesburg, we've always been known for especially having some amazing athletes that have participated in Monroe's programs, and we bring significant asset to Monroe. I am also someone who grew up in this, in Monroe. I've lived in this area since I was five years old. My husband grew up in this town. We're both alumnis of Monroe's High School. And growing up in Monroe 30 years ago, I'll age myself, that's when I'm going to have my high school reunion, is this year's 30 years ago, when I graduated from Monroe Township High School, there was never this dissension and animosity as to who was Monroe and who was Jamesburg. We were all proud students of MTHS. And I would like to see and like to hope that this board continues to bridge, you know, and bring that back, that we were all part of the same community. We, you know, we're all part of each other. We're the hole in the doughnut. You surround us. A lot of us have been living in this area for a lot longer than a lot of those that are very vocal, vocal about their animosity about Jamesburg. So why don't we all try to work together, because we all surround each other? Thank you.
If I could respond to that, I want to offer the board sincere apology if that is how you viewed our meeting. There is absolutely no distinction among a Monroe student and a Jamesburg student. That is not at all what the finance committee or any board member asking financial questions has ever alluded to. We are one community in our school, in our high school. We value every single one of our students, regardless of what their address is. They are as important as any student here. What has happened was there were questions that have been brought up. It has nothing to do with the students coming to our school. We absolutely adhere to the laws of what we are bound to by the agreement. Nobody is trying to say that a Jamesburg student is not as valuable as a Monroe student or should not be coming here. That is absolutely not the intention. There were board members that had been asking for information to understand. There were community members coming up month after month, asking questions, and the information was not forthcoming, or it wasn't the information that was being requested that was given. So, we do have a responsibility as board members to ask questions and to get information to make our decisions, and we have a responsibility to the public when they're asking for information, financials, how we're coming up with calculations. We have a responsibility to give that to them. Honestly, it had nothing, the questions that are being raised has absolutely nothing to do with the students or not valuing them. Our students all are valued equally. It has... Our students all are valued equally. It has nothing to do with being from Jamesburg or Monroe. And as we heard tonight, there were inconsistencies with how legally we were handling things, legally how we were handling our minutes and our agenda. So there are ramifications if we as a Board of Education are not following the letter of the law. And that has nothing to do with the students at all. And I don't know of any person that would ever walk through these halls of this high school and point out, you're from Jamesburg, you're from Monroe. That does not happen here. Our culture is we are one school here, we are one community, and everybody is valued the same. So I apologize on behalf of the Board of Education if you felt that there was a different type of undertone to that meeting.
There is, there is. As I said last year, it was discussed in length, in detail. I have all the documents saved in my file that was given to Monroe. All of the documents from the Supreme Court, bringing that to everything down, and several board members that I know were in that meeting are still here and it's still beginning to be answered. So that's, I just want to point that out. You keep hashing it out. We're going to pay hopefully by next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Good evening. My name is Howard Cohn. I'm a resident at 82 Country Club Drive in Monroe, and I'm also a substitute teacher. First thing I want to say is thank you very much for even considering and recommending the increase. But I do have one question regarding that. It says that it's effective February 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2022. What happens after June 30th, 2022?
So we wanted to respect the law of supply and demand, and I do remember you from when you come to the middle school. Nice to see you again. So that being said, I was in contact with some representatives of the substitute teachers, and I had a conversation with them, and I brought it to the Personnel Committee. Because what has happened is, in light of the law of supply and demand, there is a very limited supply of fabulous substitute teachers and a very great demand. That being said, we wanted to be competitive, and we wanted to be able to also be economically responsible to our constituents. So we thought it best to raise the amount at this time. And prior to the June 30th expiration, we would then again, in Personnel and to bring it to the full board, have the conversation about what is the appropriate amount to continue to pay substitute teachers.
Okay, again. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Thomas Murphy from 19 Ellingham Avenue, Monroe Township. I'm Thomas Murphy from a sixth grade, a sixth grade student at Monroe Township Middle School. The favorite part of my day is the second I get off the bus and take off my mask. I'm running home as fast as possible. In the past, I've loved school, but this has ruined my experience. I do well in school and even made the principal's list in my first marking period. Transferring to middle school was hard enough. I used to look forward to going to school and rarely missed a day. Now I just wake up and know I have nearly seven hours of breathing in my own hot breath to look forward to. It is extremely uncomfortable and it distracts me from listening to my teachers. I'm afraid to break the rules, but these rules don't make sense to me. I know a few kids who tested positive and none got very sick. This has to stop. I cannot wait to get back to normal school. My biggest fear is that it won't happen ever again. Every day, the second I take off, second I take off my mask, a staff member comes up to me and says, you have to put your mask on. Please just give me a second to breathe. I'm trying my best to keep my mask on, but I can't take it anymore. The longest mask break I get is like five to 10 minutes during a six and a half hour, six and a half hours. What makes me mad is the fact that certain staff members at times do not wear a mask a lot, but yet come up to kids who enforce rules that they are clearly not following. This is the only activity where I'm wearing a mask. I can do anything or go anywhere, such as playing, such as playing sports, going to restaurants and shopping malls, and many more. I even went to an NFL game with no mask. Some of these activities have multiple times the amount of people school does. It's unfair to go to school every day with a mask on when mostly everyone else doesn't have to. I begged my parents not to go. That is not me. I always used to love school. Thank you for your time. Please take away the mask for the students' sake.
Thank you very much. I know that it takes a lot to come up and speak in front of a group of, a large group and a large audience. I cannot wait for the day that we can take off our masks and come to school the way it used to be. Unfortunately, right now, we are under a mandate by our governor. So hopefully that we are seeing the end to this, and we look forward to what comes out in February. And I think all of us are hopeful that eventually we will get back to the way it was. Because yes, school is very different than it was in February 2020. When we look back at what we used to do, it's, you know, it's sad where we come. It absolutely is. COVID has really had an impact on everybody. And I do sympathize with you. I have a second grader as well. And it is, you know, it's very sad to see the reaction from the kids. I know nobody wants to wear a mask, and hopefully we can get back to the way we were. But thank you very much for coming and speaking. That was wonderful. Thank you.
Hi, Jeremy Marcus, 27 McFadden. I'm not sure how I can follow that, but I'll try. So this message is really for the kids. We have some here tonight, so I'll speak directly to them. So guys, I'm sure you figured it out by now. You've been lied to about everything for the last 22 months. The risk of virus, especially to you guys, lack of early treatment, denying of that treatment, masking, vaccination, school closings. Healthy people don't spread disease. Masks don't work. Vaccinations don't work. This vaccination doesn't work. It can be confirmed by all of New York and New Jersey over the last month. So the people who've done this to you, they said the kids are resilient. That's not true at all. They don't have the words to explain how bad they've been hurt, how much they've had taken from them. My 11-year-old needed a mental health day today. He's 11. He's a straight A student. I gave him the day off. He stayed home. The people who've done this to you for your protection have destroyed your generation. You've been robbed of years of normal. So I need to sleep at night, so I need to be able to tell my kids that I continue to fight for them. There's no science in any of this. I think everybody knows this. It's pretty apparent to everyone. The science is not different in New Jersey versus Virginia. Politics is different. Masks do not work better in New Jersey versus Florida. They just don't. So the kids who have to live with this for a long time, I beg you, don't forget whoever who did this to you. Don't forget who sat silent and who just followed orders. Don't forget the people who let the grandparents die alone, and the people who deemed small business non-essential. The people who told you to stay home and save lives. It's all a sham. It's unraveling by the hour. The people who pushed masks and everything else on you for the last 18 months, they recently came over to the other side believing in, you know, reality and actual science, don't trust them. They sacrificed your freedom and rights for their fear. They will do it again. Those who've had three vaccinations and double masked, they destroyed their childhood so they can minimize, they destroyed your childhoods so they could minimize their chances of, minimize their chances of getting sick. And in the end, it didn't matter anyway. Everybody gets it. So I beg you going forward, question everything, your teachers, parents, authority, all of it. Question me, question my message. Follow the money, most importantly. When nothing else makes sense, your answer is there. Learn how to think critically and understand consequences. Also, never give an inch of your freedoms, ever. You will never get them back. So you kids, you're going to have to lead us out of this mess. Please live your lives. Rip those stupid things off your face and go be kids. You've missed out on a lot. To the board, Murphy's orders end on February 10th. I knew you guys want to make a resolution to vote and make it masks optional, return us back to 2019. Also, please, no discriminatory policies at all, based on vaccines, quarantines, nothing. It's over. They've dragged this out for two years. It's done in 36 states in this, in this country. It's done in Europe, Denmark, United Kingdom, Ireland. It's all done. In Canada, there is about 50,000 trucks going to circle Ottawa right now. And they're starting to do it in Australia as well. So the truth is coming out, as I always knew it would. So please, kids, leave us out of this. Thank you.
I don't know how this works. You got to respond, or do I just go?
No, go ahead.
Eric McIntyre, 552 Spotswood English Town Road. I have nothing prepared. I thought I was just going to come here and balk a little bit. Those two last speakers were really on point. I'm here, I really have like a request and a question at the same time. I'm wondering if anybody is looking at the damage that the kids having the mask on all day is doing to them, the mental health, the anxiety. I'm just wondering if you're weighing the pros and cons. Because we've did it, you know, some people's way for the past two years. Clearly, I think every side angle opinion could agree that it hasn't worked. Everybody got the disease. Some got really, really sick, some got nothing. Thank God I was one who got nothing, but I did get a positive. And now I'm watching the kids. I have three kids, and I have kids at my house all the time. I mean, I try to, I spend most of my day, most of my week, most of my life encouraging them to be kids. Because listening to that first kid is heartbreaking. And I don't have the ability to like, oh, you know, write my notes and do all that research. I think that's for other people. I work 24 hours a day. I work in a substance use industry, and I help people find recovery that are addicted to drugs. Clearly, I am super, super worried about this generation coming up. They're isolated, they're masked, they're stuck away, they're stuck home. The quarantining and all that, I understand you're sick, you stay home. It's just adults taking care of their children. There shouldn't be anybody else involved. I went through it myself. One son of mine coughed at school. They called him into the office, they sent him home, quarantined for 10 days. He said, oh, you got to tell my brother. Oh, you got a brother? Your brother has to quarantine for 14 days. I was just drawing my hands up, you know. I wasn't coming here. I don't have time to come here. This really hurt my day, my work, my week, you know, it's a lot. God bless the people that come and fight every day. I just figured because, to me, my perception is my reality, we're breaking common sense rules, like constantly. And the kids are getting hurt. So now that I see it firsthand that the kids are getting hurt, I say I got to get involved, no matter what I'm going to miss. I got to get here, I got to speak up, I got to try to watch my language, I got to try to not act accordingly. Like, you know, it's frustrating. It's really, really frustrating. So if I could ask you to do anything, wearing a mask, there's pros and there's cons. No matter what side you believe, just put them out there and then vote from there. You know, we don't have to listen. The way you guys described it was very confusing. The unvaccinated kid might get quarantined, you got to get a PCR, and you got to get a doctor's note. A lot comes with that. There's copays, there's time off of work, there's driving them back and forth. There's a lot going on with that. I don't think that everybody puts everything into factor. I know that I do because I went through it. I know that everybody here is going through it. I just, please, look at the pros and cons, and is anybody, I don't know who's who here, is anybody actually fighting for this rule to change? To get these masks off the kids so they can be kids? And that their mental health is in the best shape it could possibly be being. That's all. Thanks.
Is there anybody else willing to, wishing to speak? Hi, how are you?
Hello. I'm Gurinder, 10 Violet Court in Monroe Township. I have two boys, one in high school and one in elementary school. And we've been living in Monroe Township for about 11 years now. We are deeply concerned on the rhetoric that has been expressed by committee members and their intent of the religious clubs at our school. The Sikh faith is the fifth largest faith in the world, believes in one God and equality for all. Religious groups provide an opportunity for all students, irrespective of their faith, to learn and understand the diversity that comes to the community. This is very core value to what we know of Monroe and to this country. And please note that the U.S. Department of Education and Justice jointly issued guidance entitled "Constitutionally Protect Prayers and Religious Expression in Public Elementary Schools" and state that students may organize prayer groups, religious clubs, and other gatherings before or after school to the same extent that students are permitted to organize other non-curricular student activities and groups. Such groups must be given the same access to school facilities for assembling as is given to other non-curricular groups without discrimination because of the religious perspective of their expression. But the legal side aside, we live in a diverse community. These clubs should be absolutely permitted, whether it's of any religion, as long as it follows the guidelines as laid down by the school. Thank you.
Before you go, the clubs are on the agenda for approval this evening? Just so you know, it is in the agenda for approval for the clubs?
Yeah, but there was a widespread conversation in the community, social channels, which called for abolishing of the clubs. And very specifically, two religious clubs were called out. Not all. There were only two that were called out. So which definitely concerns the community members that belong to those two clubs.
Okay, no, I understand, and I understand what goes on on social media. It is not representative of what this board deliberated on in the curriculum committee. It was presented to the committee. The committee did recommend bringing it to the full board tonight, so it is on the agenda.
Yeah, we absolutely appreciate the community, and we appreciate the diversity that's accepted. But it's important for the board to know that when noise is made in social media, it does come across to the students as well, and it impacts the thinking of the students. And then they have questions, and they'll expect parents to then stand up and speak for them.
I agree with you. Unfortunately, we can't control what's out there on social media. I mean, the things that are put out there, the disinformation, the criticism, you know, it's unfortunate that that's what goes on. So I apologize for that, but do know that we did, the board did discuss it in curriculum. And there is a process for clubs. And we do have very diverse clubs. And it is important to understand that these clubs are all open to every student at the high school. It is not secluding anybody. You do not have to be of any race or religion or ethnic background to partake in any of our clubs. That would be against the law. That would be discriminatory. So these, these clubs are all open to our students. There is a process. There's an application process. It goes to administrator at the high school that oversees the clubs. The recommendation comes up to Dr. Lehman, and it's brought to curriculum. So these are not just clubs that are formed, you know, off the cuff and just come out. These are very well-vetted. They, they have a structure to them. There's a, there's a very detailed process. So I don't know if everybody in the public that was commenting on social media understands exactly what that process was to form a new club.
Yep, great. We appreciate the board decision on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anath. I'm a sophomore from Monroe Township High School, 10 Violet Court. And I support exercising the right to have religious clubs in our school. Religious clubs help spread awareness of different religions in our school and in the world. This helps people be educated on the different cultures and traditions, which rather than increasing polarization, increases religious tolerance. Diversity is an integral part of Monroe and our American values. And I'm disappointed that two minority groups are singled out when we have, when we have other religious clubs at our school as well. This in itself is a significant reason to have these clubs. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I would just like to reiterate, the board did not call out any clubs. The board was putting this on the agenda for approval. Nothing was singled out by the Board of Education. It's unfortunate what does go on on social media. So for that, I apologize that any students were negatively affected by what is on, on social media. But the intention of the Board of Education was never to not permit certain religious groups over other groups informing the clubs, that that was not the intention of the Board of Education.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just wanted to voice my opinion. Good evening, respected members of the Board of Education. My name is Sohavi Gore, 4th Circuit Court. I am a freshman attending Monroe Township High School and have been in the district throughout my whole education. I am a proud member of the Sikh community and am very excited to be a part of the founding of the Sikh Student Association at MTHS. A club provides an outlet for students to connect and explore new experiences. There are many clubs at MTHS, and each has a sole purpose or goal, such as the chess club, who has members that love to play chess, but also welcome members who want to learn it as well, as well as all are welcome. As such, the Sikh Student Association Club provides the same outlet. It welcomes everyone regardless of background, race, gender, or ethnicity. It provides a platform for Sikh practicing students to connect, educate, and join in doing various community service initiatives called SEVA, which is a core principle of Sikhism. I want to personally voice my desire to have a Sikh I want to personally voice my desire to have a Sikh Student Association Club at Monroe Township High School. Thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adriana Grasso, I live on 47 10th Avenue and I'm a junior at this high school. I wanted to talk about the traffic and how the possible expansions to the schools. I wanted to talk about the traffic and how the possible expansions to the schools is going to affect that. The traffic here is already honestly terrible. Getting into here in the morning and getting out of here is a big struggle. It's also dangerous, I've seen the traffic is not directed well at all. I see constant almost accidents all the time. Most people among staff and students have agreed with me and we've been talking about this, that there definitely needs to be something done about this. And once the expansions start, traffic will probably be even worse due to that. And I'm wondering how this is gonna be curbed, especially in the morning. Many, many, many students are late every morning nearly due to the traffic. And there's nothing put in place to eliminate those tardies. I'm wondering if moving forward, there's gonna be something done about that. It's very upsetting and frustrating to many of us students who leave our houses 40 minutes before the school day starts and live about 10 minutes from school and have to walk in late because the traffic is so bad and you still have to sign in. And it's also four tardies equal an absence. So this is very frustrating to a lot of us, it's very upsetting. And again, it's dangerous. I see the traffic in the parking lot is crazy constantly. And I just really hope that something can be done about this to lessen the time that it takes to get, especially out of the parking lot. At the end of the day, today, I got into my car around 2:03 and wasn't out of the parking lot until 2:20. And then going back to getting into the school in the morning, the tardies are very, very upsetting. And so many kids are signing in every morning. I wonder if someone could be outside to assess the traffic and see that we're all coming in from the traffic and that it's not really our fault that this traffic exists. There's nothing we as students can do about it. So I'm just wondering if there will be anything done to try to help this and curb our frustrations? Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could, if I could just offer a few comments to that. Like everything else, the pandemic has exasperated issues that we have. Back in the fall, our Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee did meet to talk about specifically the traffic patterns here at the high school. Because a lot of parents had decided to drop off their children this year because of issues around the pandemic, maybe not wanting to ride the bus. There was an increase in parent drop-off at the front of the building. So the committee did discuss looking at alternate possibilities and directional options through the parking lot. After winter break, everything has really changed for the worse. The traffic out on Prineville Road is very busy in the morning. I know that administration is full aware of it. The principals at the schools are aware of what is going on. And I agree with you, we do need to take that very seriously. Because I come here too, to pick up my daughter in the afternoon and it is, it's very crowded and it's very, it is a, it's an accident waiting to happen here. It is, and to nobody's fault. Everybody is trying to come up with solutions to help that. And part of the problem, and part of the reason why Monroe has been a district where we bus all of our children is because we don't have the infrastructure to have that amount of parent drop-off that we have been seeing since winter break. And that was one of the things that, again, on social media, when we had to go to remote for that week after winter break because of the shortage of the bus drivers, everybody, a lot of people on social media were saying, well, why can't we just drive our children? We're a district of over 7,000 students, we can't handle what is being dropped off now? That is exactly why we could not have everybody coming to drive their children to school that day. So I do know, I want to, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Chanley if you want to comment on the traffic as well as the tardies.
Sure. So we're in constant contact with the, and they are here, I want to say thank you, with the principals of the high school, the principals of the middle school, because we are aware of this concern. We know that the traffic has gotten even worse because we have been doubling up on our routes because we have a shortage of bus drivers due to health situations. The bus drivers are out, so when bus drivers are out, that means more, less bus drivers, more doubling of routes. You get the indication all the time, which is out of our control unfortunately. And what happens is, parents are wonderful, they know, oh my gosh, let me drive my child. So now even more parents are driving their children because the bus is 20 minutes late, 30 minutes late. So we're very well aware of it. Because before the situation happened, I'll speak for the middle school, the drop-off was flawless. Now, I can see that the traffic now extends beyond the back of the drop-off on Davis Road, all the way until Prineville Road. Fortunately, one of the things I did want to mention, because you did discuss the expansion, two things that people have to take into consideration. The middle school and high school do not enter or exit at the same time. So expansion and making us a larger school, which will be completely dependent upon the demographers report, will not interfere with how many children in high school, how many children in middle school. They have to be in school by 7:22, 7:50, am I right? And they have to be in school by 8:10. They are not coinciding with one another. Additionally, with the expansion, and I'm just hitting upon both comments that you made, additionally with the expansion, it should be noted that we have unhoused students. So we're in a building that was built for 1,200 children. We have 1,745, 1,755, whatever it is. So by putting on the expansion, we're not putting more children in there, we're taking the children that are considered unhoused, which does not mean they don't have a home. It means per square footage formula from the DOE, they're saying that we should have more classrooms and eventually getting rid of the trailers in the front. So I think it's important for people to know that, I'm not disregarding what you said, because you're absolutely correct. We have to look at other ways, thinking out of the box. We have worked with Mr. Piero, who's the head of security. We had a traffic officer, I apologize if that's not what you call them, but he's a police officer who happens to do the traffic. He came to the BGNT meeting when I think it was my first month here. And we started to have these conversations about the left turn, the right turn, what's owned by the county, what's a road owned by the state? What can you petition to have the right? You're allowed to make a right or a left because that's part of accidents. So that absolutely is something that we're gonna continue to look at. And it would be appropriate, I know Mr. Triorello is here virtually, that is something we can bring back to BGNT. And between now and the next time we have BGNT, we can have meetings with Dr. Higgins from the high school as well as Mr. Sittler and Mr. Higgins from the middle school to see how we can think out of the box and what we can do. But I'm glad you brought up the expansion, because I want to make sure that people realize the expansion is not because we're going grabbing other people's children and having even more children. The expansion is based upon housing the children that are considered by DOE as unhoused and giving them a proper home within the actual building. And the different times, there are in middle school and high school, it's very important to remember. We're not pushing all 5,000 children together, it's not gonna work that way, because of the different times. But I thank you for coming forward, I think it's very impressive when we have all of our students come forward and have a voice for themselves, it's very important, so I want to say thank you.
I'm just curious to know if anything will be done about the tardies or if there's any discussion to try to get rid of that? Because it is, there's lots of students that walk in late due to this traffic every morning. And yes, the administration is aware of the traffic, but we still have to sign in late.
Okay, well, I'm gonna have a conversation with Dr. Higgins, because different than the middle school, the elementary schools, they have credit completion, you have the Carnegie unit, you have different, as you know, you know, did you say you were a junior or senior?
Junior.
Junior. So you know that they have different requirements, that's a little bit different in the K-28 system. So I want to respect to have the conversation with the leadership at the high school, as well as the fact that regardless of how it's handled, you have to sign in because that's an indication that the attendance officer can take your name and then legally put you in the role. So the signing is something that has to continue. But how it works or factors against you, because I know that the four equals an absence, is a conversation that I'll be happy to have with the leadership.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brian Fabiano. Ooh, hate this mic. 19 Patricia Place. I stand here more disappointed than probably ever, maybe not ever. But I've come to this mic for almost two years during this pandemic, when we've been allowed, when we weren't remote. And we've been told we're gonna follow the science. We're gonna follow the CDC's guidelines. We're not health experts. Last time I checked, we didn't elect a board to tend health professionals. And here we are again, deviating, well, we're not gonna follow the CDC's guidelines this time. Well, we're gonna add to the CDC's guidelines. Quite frankly, I feel bad for Mrs. Chanley that she has to be in this position. And this board who sat here before Mrs. Chanley should have been making the recommendation to not put her in this position and to go along with what we've been saying the whole time, which is the CDC guidelines. We aren't different than, when it comes to the virus, than towns around us. North Brunswick are bringing their kids back after six days, according to the guidelines. East Brunswick is bringing their kids back after six days, according to the guidelines. Granted, yes, there is the caveat the Department of Health puts in that says, day six through 10, the kids have to be masked. So the only exception to that would be at lunch and during, you know, physical education. To sit here and say you're worried about segregation and that's the only reason why we don't want to bring the kids back when finally we have leniency to be able to bring these kids back for the education that they're coming here for, is preposterous. And to sit here and say, it's too hard to police, it's too hard to make sure. That's what we pay you for as administrators and as school health professionals. We're not looking to put the burden on the nurses. In towns around where I've talked to them, they give the nurses a checklist. No different than if your kid had the flu. But when we start thinking about the parents, not necessarily these parents, but any parents, where you make a decision that these kids can't come back or you put in a PCR or a doctor's note that they can't get and these parents have to miss another four days of work because the kids are home? There are families that need those days of work to be able to put food on their table, to be able to survive. But for you to sit here as scientists and say, oh, you know, we're gonna want the... I had COVID, most people around me had COVID. When you call for, when you call your doctor, don't go for PCR, you're likely gonna test positive for one to two months because the PCR test can't determine if you're shedding dead cells or live cells. Go call your doctor and say, I want to come in for an appointment. They say, would you have COVID? Nah, two weeks, we're not seeing, we don't want you to come into the office. So to put, for you to sit here and vote tonight, if you vote this in, to put extra parameters that make it more difficult to get the kids back in school, especially if their parents choose, you know what? For four days, my kid will have to sit at a different table at lunch. The kids that have peanut allergies do unfortunately, many other situations do. But if you go to the rec center right now, you go to the sports fields after school, you go and see what some of these own board members do in their own lives. It's all bets off when you're not here, but then we have a different set of rules. Think about what you're voting for tonight, please. We have a nurse here that's in a hospital that gets it. We have people that have had their own experiences. Let's not make it more difficult when we finally have leniency and a guideline and let's follow what we've been doing the whole time, we're gonna follow the CDC.
If I may just comment to that, it's not just following the CDC. The school district is required to follow the guidelines also put forth by the Department of Education. And what they, what they have basically come out and said is, you know, at day five, we think that you're not contagious. We don't know for sure, we think. There's nothing to say, there's nothing proven, there's no research proven that you cannot be contagious after day five. So what they're saying is, we think that you may not be contagious. And because we're not sure, school districts, you're going to be required to do all of these different things. You're going to not be allowed to have the kids on day six through 10 to participate in sports. You're not, you're going to have to figure out how to handle your lunch situation in already crowded cafeterias that we don't have room for the children currently now. You're going to have to not take off your masks for, you know, any type of mask breaks. There are a lot of things that the Department of Education has put in that makes this very difficult. I would love to say everybody comes back. We've all been saying for how long? The most important thing is to get the kids back into the classroom as soon as possible. But we are under, we are under guidelines of not just the CDC and the Department of Health, but the Department of Education. And there are tough decisions to make. The towns around us are putting that onus on their nurses. Madam President. Excuse me, you're out of order. Mrs. Chanley, if you would like to make any comments to that?
I think the other thing, and I don't disagree with anything Mr. Fabiano said, and that's part of the problem that trying to make this decision. And I do have a lot of my own strong beliefs. And I do also believe that my beliefs don't come into play. It's what I feel is best in moving forward to make a recommendation to the Board of Education. And the truth of the matter is, there are some districts that aren't even entertaining bringing them back at all. You are absolutely right, we can go through them and there's many districts that have brought back their children. They're not following any rules, they're not following any of the shoulds, which is the way it was explained to us from a lawyer during our meeting from Middlesex County. They really aren't. But there are some districts that said, you know what, this is too much of a headache. It is what it is, let them wait till the 10th day and it is what it is. We want to try and be respectful and conscientious and try and bring them back. Because I make this statement a lot, everybody knows, I'm all about having the kids in school. So it was a compromise that we came up with. I like what Ms. Beerman said, because I want to be transparent, she's absolutely right. We were pick and choosing, absolutely, because we don't know what else to do, because you're absolutely right. If you want to say, listen to science, some of the science you listen to, I don't want to listen to. Because they don't make any sense and then they change what they say. And then some of the science you listen to, you feel a little bit better, you feel a little bit more confident. And nobody knows. But I have to be responsible for all 7,000-plus children, so I had to make a more conservative recommendation at this time. I like the fact that the caveat, I think it's very important, is in there that we don't have to wait for another board meeting for this to change. Because it very well could change in 14 days. So that is why I made the recommendation I made. But I absolutely respect Mr. Fabiano and I respect everybody's opinion and everybody's right to feel the way they feel regarding this is a very, this is, this is a no-win situation. The only way we win is that we keep our children healthy. That's the only win that we have, that's it. So I thank you.
Tim Maslow, 2011 Court. First, I want to address the Sikh community who had very great concerns about being discriminated against. I just want to say to them, you know, they're some of the finest people I've ever met when I was campaigning. They're just great people. But please, don't take, and tell your kids this too, don't take social media for the answer. Every one of these board members up here, okay, they have an email that you can address them with, okay? And I can assure you that this board, okay, is not a board of rubber stampers, not a board that's gonna be discriminatory towards anybody. These are people that are put in tough spots, okay? It's a voluntary position, a volunteer position rather, okay? They don't get paid for it. We do have people that are paid up there, but there are administrators. Contact them directly. And I'm telling you, I assure you, that they will get back to you. As far as the COVID and what's going on, you really are, Ms. Chanley, put into a really tough spot, okay? And you were thrown to a spot. And we, as a community, should be proud of this new board that the people elected because they're not rubber stampers, okay? Ms. Fabiano's been on the board for two meetings. And she's already mentioned about Linda Greenstein coming to a meeting, okay? We have, we implored, okay, some of our old board members who were complete rubber stampers to bring our legislators to this meeting and discuss how we're gonna get funds, okay? What can we do about certain things that aren't getting done? No one showed up. Nobody showed up, because it's business as usual in Trenton, okay? I can assure you that this board that's elected up here, and they're gonna be, you guys are gonna get beat up again tomorrow on social media. There are people here today, okay, that will sit on social media tomorrow and beat the living dog out of you. And it's a shame, because that's not togetherness, that's divisiveness. And we don't need that. But with that said, I lost my train of thought there, I apologize. But moving forward, email the board if you have a question, okay? Don't go run the social media and put it on so all your friends and the people that possibly are gone now could turn around and look at it and say, oh yeah, they did this, this, and that. Email the board. Email the board, they'll get back to you. I gotta say. Email the board, they'll get back to you, I gotta say.
Thank you, Mr. Essel. And just so everybody does know, our email addresses are on the website, and if you do have, if anybody does have a concern with their school or, you know, a question, the best place to go to is your school. The first place that you should contact is either your teacher, you could go to your school principal, you can go up the chain of command, you could write to Dr. Lehman, Mrs. Chanley. I think relying on social media for information is very scary, because there is a lot of disinformation that is given. So if you have a question, you have a concern. Parents have a lot of very valid concerns, questions. Contact your school, contact the superintendent's office, the business office, the transportation office, you know, everybody is willing to listen and answer any questions that parents have. Good evening.
Hi, Sarah Aziz, 3 Lonslot Drive. I have also reviewed the organizational charts of other school districts focusing on large school districts like Monroe Township. Although these organizational charts vary in many ways, every large school district in our county has a facilities director that reports to the business administrator. I believe this is because the facilities department is associated with many lucrative contracts, including those with architects, and there are many laws and regulations associated with the awarding of those contracts. There's a lot of money involved, which is why in nearly every large school district, the oversight of the facilities department is under the purview of the business administrator. In fact, at the last BGNT meeting, the architect was asked how the construction of new school facilities adjacent to existing buildings could take place safely. The architect said that it requires very careful planning and close coordination with the business administrator as well as the principal. Yet, at the last BGNT meeting, the business administrator was absent. I don't think the district can safely plan future construction without including him in these meetings, especially since he has overseen many successful construction projects in our district. Furthermore, the expansion of the middle school will create an almost 5,000-student campus, including both the middle school and the high school across a tiny stretch of Perrineville Road across from a retirement community. This expansion will add 30 classrooms and 800 students to this building, while all the rest of its existing hallways will remain the same size. This could create a dangerous emergency evacuation situation. This is partly why the middle school expansion plan has been rejected by so many prior superintendents. The district should consult security experts and conduct a traffic study before making any expansion. Another thing that all the large school districts in our county had in common was that the business administrator was also the Oprah officer and the custodian of records. All Oprah requests are subject to attorney review to protect the board from lawsuits. The problem with having attorney review for some Oprah requests and not others is that it prevents consistency, and when Oprah requests are not handled consistently, it creates greater legal risk. The reason why the attorney review and the custodian responsibilities should be kept separate is to provide better internal controls and a system of checks and balances to avoid giving any one person too much power. As a CPA and former auditor, I can attest to the importance of strong internal controls. Internal controls are policies and procedures put in place by management to safeguard assets, promote accountability, increase efficiency, and stop fraudulent behavior and abuses of power. Our independent auditor has stated our school district has strong internal controls, which explains why our business office has a record of 22 perfect audits. The failure to have universal attorney review on all Oprah requests will weaken our internal controls and put our district at greater risk for lawsuits. If the motive behind eliminating universal attorney review is to save money on legal fees, the district would be wiser to hire a permanent in-house salaried attorney to handle this and other legal responsibilities. On a separate note, I want to ask our current school attorney whether there's any state law that prevents our school board from changing its policies to allow remote participation at public forums, especially email public comments. Can the attorney answer whether the district can change its policy to allow these email public comments even when the board meetings occur in person? Finally, I also want to know if Ms. Chanley knows how much it has cost the district to have home instruction. Does she know this figure, and would she disclose it to the audience?
One thing that I would like to address, having been part of various meetings and on the ad hoc committee, there has never been a plan presented to the Board of Education for a middle school addition. In fact, many of us board members sitting here will remember being told that it was not possible. So there was never a plan dismissed, voted down, not approved by however many superintendents you continue to put on social media. It's just not...
Well, has this expansion been reviewed by security experts? And will a traffic study be done?
Excuse me?
Will a traffic study be done before any expansion takes place?
That will have to be a recommendation from our facilities director and administration in the process.
Okay, and can the school attorney answer if the policy can be changed? Is anything from the state preventing us to change the policy to allow remote participation?
Well, what I can answer is, the Board of Education is following the laws surrounding Open Public Meetings Act. The board, when we had to have our meetings remote due to the pandemic, under the executive order by Governor Murphy, we were required to allow remote participation from people watching remotely. We are back in person, and we have our open public forum, and anybody wishing to come and address the board, as it has always been, comes in person and has their opportunity to address the board. Now, if somebody cannot make it, you can still address the board. We have email addresses, you can email the entire board, you can email the administration. There is not, nowhere to say that you cannot address the board if you don't come to the meeting.
But the policy was changed to allow remote participation by board members, and Mr. Shirewell is here, but not here in person. So if the board was able to change that policy, what's stopping it from changing it for everybody else?
That has been a longstanding policy that if board members could not attend due to health reasons, and we expanded that to other reasons in the policy, that they could participate remotely.
So there's no plans to allow remote participation from the public as of now?
We are following our policies, and we are following the open public meetings laws.
And then, does Ms. Chanley know how much home instruction has cost the district? Does that figure she knows? Do you have a ballpark figure of how much home instruction has cost the district?
As of this moment, I do not, but I would be happy to make sure that I have that information on hand, and actually, that can be discussed within the, whatever the appropriate committee would be for that particular one, and it probably would be listed under personnel, which is actually done confidentially, but I would be happy to bring that number for our next board meeting with no problem. And I actually could bring it to date as of today, and then I will make sure to have it to date as of the next board meeting, so we could see the difference between when your question was asked and when our next Board of Education meeting is.
All right, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak from the public? Good evening.
Hi, Renee Murphy, 19 Ellingham Avenue. I wasn't prepared to speak, but since my 11-year-old did it, I figured I could do it, too.
Fabulous.
I might be just too hung up on the word, but the fact that everyone has thrown around the word segregation so many times is like literally appalling to me. My nine-year-old, who is here, looked at me and said, what's segregation? Isn't that when they separated white and black? And I was like, I literally, like, I'm shocked that we're using that word. But even if you change the word, the fact remains, what you'd be doing is just that. And in a time where you're teaching such inclusion and reading woke as the pamphlets in the library state, to do such a thing to a child as to put him at a lunch table by themselves, especially if vaccinations start to go a certain way, where now you're pitting kids against each other, you're vaccinated, you're not, your parents are this or that, I think that you're going down a very dangerous path. And we've done a lot to our kids in two years mentally. You know, I keep saying that I get that school's a big part of their lives, but outside of school, my kids live a normal life. They've participated in sports since July 2020, when it opened. Our friends are normal, our family's normal, we do normal things, we're careful, we do what we're supposed to do. As my son said, he's a rule follower, we follow the rules even though we don't want to, and even though we don't understand them, and even though they don't make sense. And I think we could see that the path we've been going down the last two years is not going in the right direction, and we're just staying the course, and we're weakening our children, and we're seeing it, and we're just continuing to allow it. And I just had to say something about the segregation. I just cannot even believe it's a topic of conversation. So I think that that's it. And I think that I want, my question then would be, if you are going to vote on something like that, like, I really want to understand what's happening to our kids, because we have very little control today, and it's very sad, and we are following the whim and order of a governor that is one person who has now somehow dictated our lives. And again, like, we ask no questions, we follow the rules, and the same for you, I understand that it's your job, and I don't envy you at all, and I don't, I know you're trying to please everyone, but that's, it's never going to happen, and it's at the expense of the kids now, and it's really sad, the path we're going on. So I would want to understand what would happen if my kid came back day six as an exposure to someone at lunch for a few minutes, which is quite different than an exposure in your home, and this, there's so many factors, and every, all the other factors are ignored, but I just, I think it's like, why don't you just put a kick-me sign on him, too? I mean, it's really a bad idea. Thank you.
If I may respond to that, the point of why we came up with what we did in our picking and choosing, and maybe making our rules, and that's helped some people see it, is because I will never, perhaps someone else can sit here, put in the segregation. So I am not comfortable with that, but I'm letting you know that the Department of Education is making the statement, this is something as an expectation of a plan of action that they want the school districts to have if they allow the children to come back on day six. So the thought, and I do know that we have peanut tables, and I understand that, but the thought of children, and it depends upon their grade level, some middle school kids, I'm a middle school person, could care less, but I could picture a second grader, you know, I'm a mommy, a second grade child, maybe that day, there's nobody else for him to sit with, six feet apart, and no one else wants to sit there, and he's by himself. So the decision that I made, and I know I'm never going to make everybody happy, and the decision, but the decision has to be made to the best of our ability to say, yes, we want them to come back sooner, but we have to have some parameters because we don't want the exclusions. And segregation was something that's happened in throughout history, historically, not just with, you know, Caucasian and African-American, it's been, it's happened, you know, during the Holocaust, it's happened, you know, in Ukraine and things, there's so many things going on, but putting children separately is segregation. That is not what I am recommending. So that recommendation does not have anything to do with segregation. So I want to make sure, especially for social media, that I'm quoted appropriately, that I am against any form of exclusion or segregation, and that is why we came up with this recommendation to the board to vote on regarding allowing the children to come back prior to the 10th day. So that's my response, thank you.
And then I know some of the questions from the board, too, were if we, can we decide then, I mean, I know, I want my kid back in school, too, I don't want to keep him home for 10 days. My 11-year-old, he's good, and I, no, not so much. So, but can we choose to keep them home the 10 days then, if that makes me sad? And I don't want to send my kid to go sit at a table by himself. So I think that's like part of...
Well, I think based upon the recommendation now, as of today, because things are fluid now, once, if this passes, things are fluid, as the current acting superintendent, you would absolutely be permitted, if you say, I'm not interested in providing a medical note if it was to pass, I'm not interested in getting a PCR test, I'm not interested, I'm leaving my child home for 10 days, you are entitled to the home instruction and so forth, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak from the public? Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Pradeep Malam, 4 J Place. So there are a couple of things. Thanks for the presentation on the school expansion plans. I know we've been talking about these expansion plans for a long time. My sincere request to this board is, let's put some milestones with some dates, or at least approximation dates. I'm not going to rush you to finish it by like this year or next year, or within 18 months or within three months, okay? I want our, the most other people want, like, when we are projecting this project is going up, okay? We would like to see, like, in three months, we are getting all the approvals, in six months, we are going to do this. In 18 months or in 15 months, we are going to go for a vote, or something like that. So these kind of milestones will keep the administration also motivated, or like, towards working on a particular date or goal, and it will inform the public also, like, what we are going to expect and when we are going to expect. So instead of kicking the can down the road, like, we just like work on some kind of milestones and goals, that's one reason. The second one, any discussion is happening around Jamesburg money is not reflecting on the Jamesburg schools or Jamesburg kids or anything. It is reflecting on the sneaky things that our finance department is doing. That's the reason every time I come here, I spoke about some finance questions, okay? As I previously explained, just because our school doesn't have $2,000 to conduct an in-person ninth-grade orientation for my eighth grader, when he was an eighth grader, they canceled it. Now, we need to watch in a video, that's it. At that time, there is no COVID, nothing. Just because we don't have money for that, we canceled it. It's a great experience that kids lost, what I can say. On the same topic, the resolution you guys took to give the agenda, every item, that is it like voted against 10 people or nine people? That has to be done. I've been advocating for the same thing for the last three years, and it was never taken picture. But according to the law, a sending board member cannot vote on the things that the kids are not present in the schools. Like, I can, just like, closing my eyes for two seconds, I can tell, like, 10 incidents that Mr. Rutske crossed that line and commented on and voted on, so many things that is nothing related with the high school kids. Including last December or November meeting, he talked about the going out, reselling coaches of middle school. He doesn't care about it, he would not care about it. It should be the Monroe people or Monroe board members' business, it's not like Jamesburg business. That's the definition that we are going to get it into the agenda and minutes of the voting. Thank you. And I have one final question. The last referendum, we have around for 68 million projected on the golf course land for middle school. It is going to give us around 152K plus square foot on 35 acres. That will cost around 68 million. But now, this proposal is not going to have, is going to have around like 800 kids, and the square foot wise, I missed out, but it is going to cram into the existing school. That is, we are projecting around like 46 to 50 million, just for middle school. So I see, like, when you compare to the price only with this particular item, I think this is more on a higher side. So I think we need to do some due diligence on like how we are quoting these prices and how we are getting this price number, one thing. Second thing, when the renovation is going on, whenever we start, like, down the line two years or three years, how we are going to conduct the classes while the construction is going on?
Thank you, Mr. Malam. Mrs. Chanley, would you like to answer some of those questions?
From what I heard, I think you made two statements and asked two questions?
Yes.
In the beginning and the end. So let me just let you know, I've been here approximately 76 days, but I've been here for 19 years. I can let you know that to my, to my own experience, there has never been a conversation about expanding to the middle school. So I want to just echo what Ms. Kirby said, so we make sure we have the correct information out there. It is something that I had...
Yes, sorry, I compared with the previous referendum, what they projected for a middle school construction on the new, from the ground up, and I'm comparing with the current...
Yes, I'm going to refer to it, I remember, I remember what you said. So that being said, now that we have this opportunity to add on to the middle school, we have to remember that the cost between two years ago and now, and even two years from now, is very, very different. And like people constantly say, I'm not a doctor, I am not, I am not an engineer, I'm not an architect, but I have a brain, and my brain tells me that we do not know exactly the cost of things, we can only estimate. So the gentleman that spoke today has been our architect of record, I personally worked with him on a minimum of six, maybe seven, projects of stopgap projects at the middle school, to take every nook and cranny and make it a space for children. So I feel confident, and that's the word I would use, confident that his estimation is to the best it could possibly be. So although I hear you, what you're saying about the past middle school, we can't speak on what was because it didn't pass, so we can only speak on what we would like to bring forth. So I will let you know that we are hitting the ground running. So in the last, since November, whatever, 1st or 10th, that I've been here, we have now had tremendous progress. So now we have a, we have a tangible presentation that the board can make decisions on. I had a very nice detailed conversation with Mr. Tagan, and he will correct me, and I will ask him to come to the microphone if I make an error, and he shared with me, and I'm glad you asked this question, so if the Board of Education was confident in what they saw, and it was something that we feel could possibly pass, then at the next Board of Education meeting, there would be a resolution to then employ DI Architectural Group to move forward with the process. And the process, the way it was described to me, because I know you want dates, because that was your first question, the process is, if everything is wonderful, and we move forward in the direction that we need, and they provide their bill and their costs and so forth of what's going to happen, if everything was proceeding... so forth of what's going to happen, if everything was to proceed exactly as, um, Mr., I'm going to say his name wrong, because I call him Rich, Mr. Alderiso said, then that means that we would be able to go out for a referendum, I'm just going to push it out there, go out to a referendum in April of 2023. If that referendum was to pass, because I asked these questions, we were then told it is approximately one year, Mr. Tag, is that correct? Approximately one year from that date to have all the appropriate contractors, subconsciously to come out, do the bidding, similar to how we did bidding, I actually got to see it, because it was outside the office, bidding on the turf field and so on and so forth. It is realistic. And, and once again, these are all expectations, I want to make sure that I'm quoted appropriately. These are all expectations, positive expectations, that if the referendum was to pass in April of 2023 and everything in the job market, because we know what it's like, bus drivers, substitutes, if everything, the world was, the world was our oyster and everything was positive, it is possible by October or November, we had this conversation, of September, October or November of 2024, that we could have a shovel in the ground. Did I, did I provide that information correctly? So that is a timetable. It would be our pleasure as we move forward through BGNT, as well as through the whole board, because it's a whole board decision, not just the one committee, to move forward to keep the, to keep the, um, the community abreast of what's going on and I think it would be very appropriate for something to go on the new, um, the new newsletter, which we now call the Falcon Talons, to be able to say, we are a day this, this is where we are. We have to get there. In order to get there, we do the presentation, the whole board makes a decision and then we move forward. I am very proud and excited that we are further along now than we have been and I'm going to speak as a, I live here, so I'm going to speak as a community member and I'm going to speak as a principal, than I have seen any action take place to move forward in years. So all I could say is I appreciate all your questions because it gave me an opportunity to share with the public exactly where we are at. So I do want to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will close public forum. The next item on our agenda is the Assistant Superintendent's Report, Dr. Lehman.
Thank you. I will keep this brief, I will do an abbreviated Start Strong kind of update. This is the time of year, well, typically do it in the fall, reporting on spring testing. This is Start, Start Strong testing is what the students took in the fall. So each year, we kind of describe what's going on, I'll have a PowerPoint that I'll put up on, or a PDF that I'll put up on the website tomorrow morning, that has some of our test data, but I'll just highlight some of the Start Strong assessment information and then we can kind of move on with the meeting. So Start Strong was taken in fall 2021, it produced information to be used as a standards-based complement to the resources used by educators in their classrooms to evaluate the needs of their students. As determined by the US DOE, the administration of the Start Strong satisfied federal statewide assessment requirements to administer general assessments in English Language Arts, Math and Science only for the 2020-2021 school year. The spring NJSLA schedule will resume this spring. So in other words, what we did in the fall was a compliance piece because we postponed testing from last spring because of COVID. It's all connected to federal funding and this is a totally different assessment, has no bearing on graduation assessments or graduation requirements, has no bearing on, uh, previous or future testing, it's a standalone assessment that basically was, in summary, a final exam given in the fall, about three to four months after you finished your previous year's course. And as we all know, final exams are controversial in themselves. So from a district in Monroe's situation, we already have things in place, specifically our measures of academic progress, our MAP testing, we give that two to three times a year and we have the historical data for six to seven years on many of our students. This assessment in general was put out there for districts that may not have that in place. So coming off of COVID, to give them a snapshot of maybe where their students were, what, where they needed help. A district like ours, this was a compliance piece, we got it done, the students engaged in it, it was a requirement for us to do, but the data itself, uh, we treated it differently than we treat our MAP data. Our MAP data, like I said, we have a historical record, this data didn't tell us anything we didn't already know. We had given two MAP assessments from the time that we took this data and we got it back. So even though this was pretty quick to get the information back, we already had fresh data points that we're familiar with and we know how to use. So just, just context for this information. Again, there's no comparison between NJSLA and this assessment, but what we see is the same students that struggle on NJSLA are the same students that struggle in this, in this assessment. So what does a Start Strong Fall Assessment not do? It does not replace local standards-based benchmark assessments that may already be in place for us, that was MAP. And this does not replace the spring 2022 assessments. So we still have NJSLA coming up this spring. So even though we tested in the fall, we've got to test again in the spring. Again, that meets our requirement this year for federal testing and state testing. Test design, so basically what I said was, it was a test, almost like a final exam on the previous year's content. So if you're in fourth grade, you took a test on third grade stuff, if you're in eighth grade, you took a test on seventh grade stuff. And it's a prioritized subset of standards. So some of the assessments were 10 questions long and they're making these, I guess, extrapolations of whether you're on, you need a little more help, a little less help, based off of 10 questions, some were 15, some were 20 questions long. It depended on the grade level, depended on the content, just to give you kind of an idea of what it looked like. And then they just want to highlight, it does not cover the breadth and depth as we see in NJSLA. NJSLA is a multi-day test, it's a little longer and there's multiple sections. This was a one-and-done, 10 questions for math, maybe 15 questions for science and 20 questions in ELA. Done. You could do two, two assessments in one day, sometimes it took three days, I mean, it depends. So that's really the overview of our Start Strong, what it is. We sent them home paper copy and then, uh, I believe the digital ones arrived before the paper copies did, so next year, we will probably just push them out digitally through the Parent Connect or through the, uh, the Genesis Parent Access. We'll attach the letter through there. Uh, we didn't realize we had the capability to do that, so when we, when we uploaded it and they got automatically pushed out. So that's why the timing on that was a little interesting. But paper copies were mailed home and like I said, you'll see on the, on the PowerPoint and things, it's really consistent with what we already know, the students that needed help, they're already getting help. We use the MAP assessments to put students into an RTI process, it's one of our multi-tiered systems of supports. Students get varied level of help, whether it's extra time with a teacher in the classroom, a reading specialist, basic skills teacher, you know, whatever they may need, things are already in play. And again, this assessment for us was mostly a compliance piece and it breaks it down by grade level, it breaks it down by subject, and again, there were no surprises here. Um, you know, there are certainly areas that we know we need to work on, you know, with certain students that struggle and, but they always struggle, um, and we kind of knew that going into it. So we, we have those, you know, supports focused on them. So that's pretty much it, you can look forward to the presentation to be uploaded on the web tomorrow. That's it. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Lehman? No? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much. I want to first just quickly say thank you, I know that Mr. Alderiso just recently left, I think he did an excellent job in being expedient but giving quality information to the public. I believe that presentation will be uploaded now that it has been shared with the whole board, we, we want to make sure that we do that. One of the reasons, we think it's best that the Board of Education has an opportunity to, in its whole, other than just the one BGNT committee, to be able to see it and digest it and then during our presentations, just so you know, for those of you that may have had questions, it will be made available to you, I would assume by tomorrow. Uh, I do want to also just say that Ms. Tumanello, as was, as well as Ms. Mayola, I knew them both, one was a bus driver who did have a ride at the middle school and the other one was one of my mommies that I knew from the PTO from many years ago, who did wind up subbing in our building. And any loss is a horrific loss. And although we sometimes come at odds with one another with how we feel about things, as long as we get to be healthy and be alive, it is the greatest gift of all, from whomever you believe in above. So I did want to just acknowledge the fact that unfortunately, they are, they are not with us at this time. I would like to also make a statement, so I am part of the actual Board of Directors for the Educational Services Commissions of New Jersey and I got this very nice, um, a very nice certificate sent to me, thanking me, and I was like, wow, I'm being thanked, why am I being thanked? And I would like to in turn thank the Board of Education because it is, it was brought to my attention that January is Board of Education Acknowledgement and Recognition Month and, um, I'm going to say I'm actually happy to be up here, I really am, believe it or not, and I want to just say I thank you for all of your support. I think that you guys work tirelessly and you are voluntary and you do not get paid and I think that's something that people need to understand, that you go above and beyond and even when we are not always in agreement, we always want to believe that we do what's best for children. And I also do want to say, although I think everybody by now has probably left, I do want to thank the leadership team, I have been really welcomed with open arms and they've been coming quite often to a lot of our meetings, we did have some principals, which I did mention in the confidential, that were able to come from the middle school, the elementary school and the high school, because we are, we believe strongly that the leadership must be shared leadership and they must have a voice. So the fact that they are invited to be part of the decision-making process and we want their input regarding the expansion and the renewal of our schools, so I did want to say thank you to them as well. So, and thank you to the public. So at this time, it is recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through AX with the exception of AW number 27, which will be held for the next board meeting.
So I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Chiarella, seconded by Mrs. Belko. Are there any questions for Mrs. Chanley before a roll call?
I might have one, I, I'm just making sure, on, um, there are, there are 30 new positions.
That's, that's for the Winterfest?
No, uh, oh yeah.
Yes, yeah, yes, um, we actually just had this-
So they're temporary?
Yes, what happens is on a yearly basis, they have the Winterfest activity-
Okay.
-so they're not actual, they are new positions, but they're not new positions like you would normally hear in a personnel report of new positions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rutske?
So, just curious, sorry about that, curious about, um, so, okay, so that was AW we're scratching, right?
Till next time.
That's the Winterfest we're scratching.
Correct.
Okay, so I'll take that off my list. On AT, um, there's five, one, two, three, four, five people that are getting salary adjustments, is there anything you could talk to with this, like specifically these five, like?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, um, in, um, three specifically of these five, a, a position was eliminated in the, um, in the business office and then the workload was then put on to the additional employees and the other, in the other FTE, or full-time equivalent of the position was not replaced. When I did my organizational scan, and I'm still currently doing it, and I did on a macro level and now I'm doing it on a micro level, I started also looking at some inequities that had existed in pay differentials and that's where, I won't speak to the individual, but that's where the other, um, two members came into play, actually the other, one member came into play, I should say, because we believe that the inequities that exist, when it's appropriate to right the wrongs with no intention, we're going to do that where appropriate and that was a conversation that I had in detail in Personnel. So that was basically the reason for, for the change. And then the one additional, because that was four of the five that I just discussed, is that good enough information-wise, do you feel comfortable?
So I was just going to just confirm, I think what you said was, so there was a full-time employee that was reduced-
Correct.
-and so-
The workload was-
-there was money to be spread around.
That's exactly what it was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, did you want me to elaborate any further?
No.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
And just so I, I, so we're all clear, AW number 27.
That's correct.
Not the entire AW.
That's correct, number 27, I think, yes.
Oh. Okay.
Are there any other questions? Okay, if not, Mr. Gorski, can we have a roll call?
Yes, personnel items A through AX with the exception of AW number 27. Motion moved by Mr. Chiarella, this is seconded by Ms. Bierman. Mr. Chiarella?
Excuse me, I thought I seconded it.
Who, who seconded?
I seconded that motion.
Mrs. Belko.
Did I say Bierman? I beg your pardon, Belko, I have Belko written down. Uh, Mr. Chiarella voted yes, Ms. Fabiano?
Yes, um, actually, I just want to ask a question to Mr. Greg, should I?
Use your mic, please.
Sorry, should I recuse on item D since I wasn't a board member at that time?
Um, let me just look at item D, let's see.
It's a, it's a HIP complete.
Yes, if it's a HIP, you weren't-
Yeah, we weren't, I wasn't present for that, so I'm just recusing on-
Right, you don't have that, you, you-
Yeah, I don't have that report, so I'm recusing on item D.
Okay.
Yes, and recuse on D, so noted. Mr. Rutske?
All right, so who's taking the notes here? Mr. Gorski?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can I just ask a point of order?
Yes, point of order.
Uh, Ms. Fabiano, that was on Board Action E, we're on only personnel right now?
Oh.
Because you're talking about the closed session for HIP.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
So it'll come with the next vote. That's my point of view, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess all of them, sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, on all of them, thank you.
So what I've chosen to do, looking at your list, I think it was actually easier for me to just narrow it down the opposite way of what I'm voting yes to.
Okay.
So I'll rattle that off and Mr. Gorski will follow me, it'll be like the good old days. So, we're going to vote yes to personnel, so B, C, F, G, K, O, Q, R, double A, A, C, A, D, A, E, A, G, A, K, A, L, A, S, A, T, under AU, I'm voting yes to just the high school portion, A, V, I'm voting yes to four, nine and 10, 20 through 20, 20, 20 through 25, 45 through four, 45 through 59. And then on AW, yes to number one, the security officer and yes to AX. And I believe that covers everything.
All right, would you like me to repeat that?
No. We can go over it afterwards.
That was very impressive.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Personnel items A through AX, with the exception of AW number 27 has passed.
Thank you.
It is recommended that the board approve Board Action items A through M.
We got a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Chiarella, seconded by Mrs. Bierman. Are there any questions or comments for Mrs. Chanley for the roll call?
Um, I have a quick question. I was, um, and we haven't gotten to this, but it sort of correlates with it. I noticed that we, you know, we are increasing our substitute rate, I noticed that we're also looking at, um, I guess subsidizing substitutes if we cannot get them, is that what this, I guess that's what this was my question, um-
That's the BA report next.
Right, I guess, it sort of correlated with it. I'll just forget it, I'm going to rescind my question.
All right, Mr. Gorski, can we have a roll call?
Board Action items A through M. Ms. Bora?
I'm going to abstain on C and D and yes on everything else.
Yes, on everything, abstain on C and D, thank you. Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
I'm going to also abstain on C and D. And, um, I'm also going to, um, for item J, when it says it's for a first read, is that approving the new, the modified changes?
It's approving it for a first read, it goes back to policy for more discussion and it comes back to the board for a second read and final approval.
Okay. Then I can all approve everything except abstain on C and D.
A big pardon. Did you say C as in Charlie and D?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chiarella? Yes. Ms. Belko?
Yes to everything but J, policy 1648.11. I'm going to abstain on that.
Abstain on J.
Just policy 1648.11. It's not spread out as to A, B, C, or D. So-
So, thank you. Mr. Ruski?
So, on these, I believe I'm gonna vote yes to everything and abstain on C and D as well, as I wasn't here in December.
Okay. Ms. Fabiano?
Yes, abstain on C and D.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes, on everything. No on item J, policy 1648.11.
And Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the Business Administrators' Report. Mr. Gorski?
Madam Board President, and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action items A through P be approved by consent roll call. So I'll move.
Second. Okay, moved by Mr. Chiarella and seconded by Mrs. Fabiano. Are there any questions on the Business Administrators' Report? Mrs. Arminio?
Sure. I don't know if the number has changed. I have the old agenda. But it's the resolution for temporary, temporary facility use of the trailers. Are we just renewing the trailers for the middle school? Is that what this is? There's no new trailers coming up?
Madam?
Yes, Mr. Gorski.
That is correct. That is my understanding.
Doesn't need that. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mrs. Ratner?
So this is kind of what I was going along with, with, I guess it's item A too. Are there specific positions that we are looking at using this organization for?
That's the Delta T group north. Is there any specific positions that we're gonna use this for?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I guess, you know, my thought is comparison between what we pay a daily rate to have a consistent person versus what we might be outsourcing. You know, I noticed that, you know, they are paying certain teachers more than others. I wasn't sure if we're using them for nurses, for guidance counselors. Just the rates are different as opposed to our rate, which is more like a standard. And I was just curious as to-
Sure. Mr. Gorski would be happy to speak on that. So what happens is when we have services that are required per the IEP, we always would like our own employees to take on those services. But when they are not either available or for whatever reason they do not apply to take on the services, we bear the responsibility of still giving the service to the child, and therefore we contract a company like this. Those rates are often set by the company, and therefore you will see a diverse, a diverse change in the amounts. But you're absolutely right. First, we always go to our own, but then regardless of availability, we must meet the needs of the IEP. So that's why the service is important.
So these are only for special education IEP needs? Because I, I'm looking, I see-
Not necessarily.
Okay.
So, because I will let you know that you can also have certain things in a 504 plan or an IEP, and you could also have certain things in, in a plan if someone was to have, you know, under gifted education or needs. The reason why I use the word IEP is because that's the one that's most commonly known. But a service that's needed for a child to complete their education, regardless of whether they are identified as a special education child or regulation education child, the services are the services. And if we cannot fulfill those services in-house, then we go to, and we go to a contracting service. And that's how you would refer to them.
Okay, but this isn't a contracting service to, let's say, fill substitute positions in the school during the day if we don't have the substitutes to fill them?
No. The only time that we do do that is that if we are short nurses, we do utilize companies for nurses to come into, because nurses are at our highest need. So if we need to contract services for nurses, yes, we do.
Okay. But not regular teachers or guidance counselors, things like that?
So we're not bringing, we're not bringing in a music teacher into Buckley Brook.
Okay.
If that's your question.
That's sort of what I was wondering. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any other questions? No? Okay, Mr. Gorski, can we have a roll call?
Board Action items A through P, moved by Mr. Chiarella, seconded by Ms. Fabiano. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes, recuse on item N.
Recuse on N as in Nancy. Mr. Chiarella? Yes. Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on item N.
Recuse on A3, and yes on everything else.
Recuse on A3.
A3.
Thank you. Mr. Ruski?
Yes to everything, recuse on letter M as in Mary.
Thank you. Ms. Bora?
Abstain on item B and recuse on item N as in Nancy. Yes on everything else.
A big pardon, I had a hard time here.
B as in boy, I abstain.
B as in boy abstain?
Yeah, and, and as in Nancy, I recuse.
Okay, thank you.
Yes on everything else. Thank you.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
So noted. Ms. Kirby?
Uh, yes, recuse on A, number three, and N.
Can I ask a question? And, we can't, I know we're in the middle of a vote, but should I have recused on N based on the point of order?
Madam President, may I make a suggestion? The members that are voting no, or recusing on N, they can recuse on their specific line item for N. So the motion passes.
Okay.
Should I note it that way from all, anybody have an objection?
Yes, please.
Yes, please, Mr. Gorski. Is everyone okay with that? Yes, okay.
Motion passes. That concludes Business Administrator's Report. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And our next item is our Board President's Report. Good evening. Just a couple of things that I wanted to say, reiterating, reiterating what Mrs. Chanley had mentioned. January is recognized by New Jersey School Boards Association as Board of Ed Member Appreciation Month. So I would like to take this opportunity to thank everybody here on the board for participating, for volunteering your time. We are elected by the community to serve them. But it does go without saying that there is a lot of time and effort and preparation that we do put into this, time away from our families and other things in our lives, to serve our community to the best of we can, all in good faith and for our staff and our students. So thank you to everybody on the board. I also just wanted to share with you that I did receive, today I picked it up, it was a proclamation from Mayor Delina's office. They are going to present it at the council meeting as well, thanking the Board of Education members in recognition of School Board Recognition Month. So thank you, thank you all for being on our board. I also wanted to just, you know, say a word of thanks to, to all of our staff members. This is really a trying time. You know, we are trying to get back into the schools. We are trying to get used to this new normal that is not normal at all. And I, I would like to give a special thank you to our bus drivers and our staff in transportation. It is a real large task transporting all of our students each and every day. And it has become increasingly difficult with our drivers that have been out. They're picking up double runs and doing, you know, double routes, and it is causing, you know, we all have to understand, and please be patient with your bus drivers, understand that they're doing their best they can as well. I know it's very frustrating when the bus comes late. I know transportation and the schools are trying to communicate, you know, to, to let parents know when their, when their buses are going to be late. So just know that, that is, we are aware that there are delays, and, and I know everybody has the best interest of the students. But, you know, thank you to our, our bus drivers and our transportation staff. Thank you to all of our staff, because it truly is not, you know, it's a, it's a more normal school year than last year, but it's not, it's not at all what it has been. So I want to give a special thank you to all of our staff here in the Monroe Township School District. Thank you to all of our staff members and administrators that came out tonight to support us here. It was very much appreciated, and we thank them for coming out. And with that said, you know, just again, our collaboration with our community. We talk so much about, you know, wanting to, to bring the community together. I think this referendum process has the ability to do that. We are looking to do something as the Board of Education to address our unhoused students, to prepare for increases coming from the continued building here in Monroe Township, and we have a fiscal responsibility. We are looking at, you know, we're looking at a fiscally responsible solution to something that, you know, we have not been able to solve here. We've had two referendums that failed. It is time to come together as a community and work together to make sure that we can pass something that will, you know, allow us to properly educate our children here. So that, that's all I have to say tonight in my President's Report. And again, I appreciate, and all of us here on the board, and thank you all for your service to our community. With that, our next item on the agenda is other board business. Does anybody have any other board business? Mrs. Ratner?
Really quick, I just wanted to mention that I had the opportunity last week to attend the middle school seventh and eighth grade concert. And then I had, as many of you know, the opportunity to attend the Woodland concert tonight, which was my daughter's first band concert, which is very sentimental for me. And it was just so nice to see students performing again. You know, it's been a really long time. This was the first concert for a lot of these kids with the middle schools. They haven't had one since elementary school. And so it was just really wonderful. And then I also had attended the, the Super Saturday event, I think it was called, over the weekend, that sort of showcased some of the athletic teams as well, which was also really nice, just again, seeing things normal, if you will. And the other thing I just did want to mention for anyone who may not know, on a sad note, Mrs. Patty Lang, who had served on the board, has recently lost her spouse. It was quite sudden. I know that she had served here for several years, and so I just wanted to express my condolences to her.
Thank you.
May I?
Mr. Ruski?
So piggybacking on the band, I believe the Jazz Band Concert for the High School is next Thursday, February 3rd, just to put that out there ahead of time. I'm sure it's gonna be a great night. They've been practicing really hard. Definitely my sympathies go out to the, the people that we represented earlier today, as well as Patty Lang's husband. Very sad. And my, my prayers go out to the family, of course. Question about the referendum, or not the referendum. So the high school part, which obviously affects Jamesburg, is the smallest part, four to five million. Do we by chance have four to five million in a Capital Projects reserve account that we could sort of get that going a little sooner before the referendum, or we have nothing in a capital reserve budget?
The, the capital reserve balance has been depleted to about $20,000.
Oh, so no, no addition.
I, I plan on putting that on the June finance agenda, so that the board can understand what the anticipated surplus number is for the 21, 22 school year. And if the board desires, they can move money via transfer from excess surplus to capital reserve, with the understanding that that has a constrictive effect on the future budgets.
Right.
Because it will not roll over.
Understood. I was just curious.
Yes.
I just want to respond, because I, I do agree with, with what you're saying regarding the scope of things. But I do want to let you know, and Mr. Tag is here as well, because we've had this conversation, our next BGNT committee meeting, we will be referencing, Dr. Higgins brought to our attention, similar to what we do for the middle school, that there's perhaps a wall that can be created with then increase another two classrooms. And we're also looking at some movement, similar to what we did at the middle school. Because you're absolutely right, perhaps there are some small projects that can be put into coming out of the direct operating budget, so that we don't have to worry. You're absolutely right about waiting for the referendum for the additional classrooms. Small things that we can do, similar to how we've done at the middle school, and now we're starting to do it at the elementary schools. So at least it's, it's food for thought of something we're moving forward with.
Right, because I think that's where the most unhoused students are, is in the high school. Am I right?
Yes.
Or, I think so.
I think so.
So, yeah, baby steps.
Right. But at least being considerate, moving along all the way, not just waiting for a referendum.
That, that would be great. Thank you.
Ms. Bora?
Thank you. Mr. Ruski, you know, touched the same topic that I was gonna ask. We had approved trailers. And if we have to wait for this referendum to address the high school overcrowding, we're talking 2026, before those four classrooms will be ready. So in the meantime, unhoused students, now you did mention that you're looking at stopgap solutions. So my question is, does that help us address the immediate need of trailers? Or do we need to start the conversation? Because I know that they were approved in a previous board meeting before the pandemic. And then that was kind of put aside because schools went remote.
I think, I think it would be appropriate to have a conversation with Dr. Higgins. We can invite him back to the BGNT committee, which he will be coming to represent this wall, for lack of a better word, two classroom project that he'd like. Because I think that engaging our principals, which is something that sadly I was not part of in, in the, in the past, and I think it's so important, because no one understands the operation better for the buildings than they do. So inviting them to come in and, and speak with us, as well as having Mr. Tag present, we could have these conversations about making do, making do. And I think that's what it comes down to. Dr. Lang, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, so what we saw tonight was a package-
Right.
-but had three projects in it.
Right.
So getting to the referendum and passing the referendum would most likely be one package. But as soon as the referendum passes, there are three separate projects. So the high school being a smaller, significantly smaller project, probably has a significantly different timeline than building the addition at the middle school, and then also the Apple Garth project. So whereas maybe shovels in the ground is approximately the same time, because when you get the referendum passes, that's when the money is. But it is a smaller project, so therefore your plans, you know, the plans and plan development and things maybe is a little shorter. So again, that would be questions for Rich, specifically to ask when we move deeper into the project. But think of it as, to get the money is, is a project, you know, getting, getting-
Right.
And then you have three pieces to the puzzle, and they'll probably finish at different times. There's six classrooms in the back, that's a totally different project than working the front of the middle school, and then the Apple Garth project. So again, there's no clear timeline necessarily to tell you months and things like that, but it's not necessarily gonna, that's probably not a three-year project, you know?
Right.
But again, that's more questions to ask as we get deeper into the-
Absolutely.
The more planning and things.
Right. My, my purpose of bringing it up here is to keep it top of mind and keep talking about, and the next thing that I'm gonna talk about is also from that perspective, because we know we're looking to address renovations and extension for Apple Garth together in the referendum. But Apple Garth, and I've been having conversations with Mrs. Chanley and Mr. Tag about this, we've been doing as much as we can to keep up with the maintenance. The maintenance is hard. That timeframe that we're looking at, things could go, you know, go bad at some point, where we need to do a bigger renovation product, project using capital budget without even a referendum. And the capital budget doesn't look like you have some. But when such situations come up, do, are, are we ever in a situation that we don't have this money to fix this? Or that is never, like, I, I'm talking as a layman here. Do we ever get into situations where we say, this project is going to cost $500,000 to repair? We don't have that. What do we do? I'm just trying to think out loud about all the things that have been raised by the public in terms of how dire straits things are, and we are looking to resolve it. But will we ever be in a position where we say, oh, what do we do now with Apple Garth renovations? Mr. Gorski?
Madam?
Yes, Mr. Gorski?
First, if something major was to go at Apple Garth, there is a contingency plan to move students over to the student center. It's not outfitted for student use, but it can house them temporarily. There is district insurance on some of the larger items that we, we could pursue if, you know, God forbid a boiler was to blow or something like that. And keep in mind that there is, due to the management of each year's budget, a figure of excess surplus which ranges from three to six million dollars. So if there was an emergency $500,000 hypothetical need for a repair that's immediate, and there was no budgeted amount for it, the board could move via resolution $500,000 from, from any other, in all available counts for that purpose. So I, I sleep well at night knowing that we have that excess surplus for those purposes, if the insurance can cover it.
Thank you. That just does address my concerns. And the last thing that I wanted to bring up with, there was a mention, when we were finalizing demographers, you know, there was a mention of an attendance zone that should be included in that report, and that was, Mr. Polari had said that we can get that from the town. But I don't believe that that was brought up at a recent BGNT meeting. Did we get that from the town? Was anybody able to pursue that? There are three components to the, to the proposal that we put out with Ross Haber. One of them was attendance zone, and we were supposed to get that from the town. Did anybody?
Madam?
Yes, Mr. Gorski?
I could say that we've had calls out to the municipality, because we had heard from Ross Haber that there were some delays with information coming. Mr. Tag and I did have a pleasant conversation today with Mr. Weinberg, and I believe we've scheduled a meeting with Ms. Chanley and others to, to get that information- scheduled a meeting with Ms. Chanley and others to get that information and move things along more quickly.
Is that holding back our demographic's report by any chance? Is that little piece holding us back?
The concern for that is why we called Mr. Weinberg and set up this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm confident that we're back on track now. Mr. Tag, correct me if I'm wrong, there may have been a turnover in staffing at the municipal building, which led to some of this lack of response.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other board business? No, seeing none, we will go to our public forum. You are able to speak on any topic you would like at this public forum. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and you have four minutes. Good evening.
Hello, Nicole Fernandez, 52 Evergreen Terrace. I just want to request that better training is provided to staff that will be dealing with the special education population. The district consistently does things in a reactionary manner and never appears to be proactive. I'm aware of transportation shortages, but I should not have to worry that my seven-year-old child with special needs is going to come home traumatized from a 15-minute bus ride because, sorry, because people are being hired and the district is being negligent in properly training them. And I know that my situation is not the only situation where people are complaining about bus situations with the transportation with special needs children. I don't know really what's going on with other children, but from just special needs families, there are a lot of issues going on, and I think you guys really need to work on training them properly.
Madam President, may I ask the speaker if she was referring to an in-house bus or a contracted route?
In-house.
In-house?
In-house.
Would you mind contacting Mrs. Kathy McDonald?
We're all very aware of what's going on. Yes, very, very aware.
So, hi, Ms. Fernandez, so I would like to say that I think that it's imperative that we use the proactive approach rather than reactive. I can only speak from moving forward now in my role as I am here now. I do agree that with our special needs children, and all children, but particularly with our special needs children on the form of transportation, that it is imperative that all the drivers, as well as the aides, get the proper training so they can have a forethought of understanding of how to deal with children that may have some special circumstances. So I'm sorry for the unfortunate situation that you personally dealt with, that I'm aware of, that we spoke about. And moving forward, it is a conversation that I've had already with the Director of Transportation, and she is in agreement. I do believe that training does occur, but the level of training, I think that you're speaking about, and the level of training, that's the requirement, may not be enough. So I definitely will be looking into working with Dr. Lehman to have the conversation about what is the appropriate training. And there is never too much knowledge that we can impart to our employees to prepare them to the best of their ability to work with all of our children, but particularly absolutely our special needs students. So I thank you for coming forward.
And like I said, like, obviously I know the shortages, I know the double bus runs, I know what's going on. But if that's the case, maybe offer the aides that are actually in the class with some of these children that are properly trained, maybe they want an hour overtime, if that's allowed, or two. And since they know the kids, they know how to deal with them, they pretty much mingle with each other. So if it's maybe a familiar face, maybe that's something that the district could look into, and maybe, you know, pay them a little extra for the extra hour or two that it would take to put them maybe on the bus if it's allowed.
So that's actually a good out-of-the-box thinking, and I will definitely have a conversation with Dr. Lehman and Ms. McDonald and Mr. Gorski, because I think perhaps, I don't know if that was something they'd be willing to do, but if we could almost like a wraparound, you know how we talk about wraparounds when you have before and aftercare? Perhaps those powers that are familiar with the children, if we could have that conversation, we could always think out of the box. We want to make what's best for kids, and if that's what it takes, then I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening, Betty Sabarito, Two Barrymore Drive, and I'm the leader of the Special Education Parent Advisory Group in the district. Before I read my thing, just to address that, we had a meeting at CPAG in March of 2019 with Mrs. McDonald, Mrs. Rella, Mr. Gorski, and Mr. Goodall, where they committed to do training on the buses, and that never happened. So I just want to put that out there. Myself, along with my CPAG co-leaders, have long been advocating for changes in our special ed department. While it is true that some programs and resources we have are better than other districts, and we are further along than many years ago, we are still not where we need to be. As such, we need to continue our work as a district. CPAG has been advocating for what students are legally entitled to, and also working hard to change our district narrative and culture to ensure equity for all students. Dr. Lehman has continued to work collaboratively with us, and we thank you for that. And Mrs. Chanley has stepped right in to make for a seamless transition, and we thank you for that. In addition, we have continuously collaborated with supervisors, Mr. Flown, Mr. Morales, and Dr. Roselle, to take us in the right direction. I will preface this next area by stating that here in Monroe Township School District, we have some of the best educators in the state of New Jersey. Outstanding teachers, service providers, paraprofessionals, and administrators that work diligently to ensure that all our students receive an appropriate education and ensuring compliance. Also improving their everyday lives so that they can live their best lives. We also need to be supportive of all of our educators by providing them the necessary tools, support, and trainings to ensure their success as well as that of their students. Not all in this district have special ed certifications, training, and experience, so we need to create that for them. However, we do have room for much improvement, and as CPAG, we have severe concerns that not all in this district see the importance of making changes and improving special education. One area that CPAG has addressed for well over five years is the area of specials such as art, music, physical education, and media, especially at the elementary level. We have been vocal about our general dissatisfaction in terms of these specials in the areas of inclusion, as well as IEP is not being followed, curriculum not being modified. We cannot continue to have students' rights being violated, or any child's special education not being treated as less or with indifference. Tonight, however, I want to recognize a bright light in that, and an exception to the general feeling of the narrative negative. I want to give incredible recognition to Mr. Yale Snyder, who is one of the teachers in our instrumental music department. He has proven to be an outstanding educator for all students. And as CPAG, we want to recognize him for his commitment to ensuring the best possible experience for our special education students. While he is not a special educator, he continues to do all he can to be an effective teacher for his special education students. He has worked hand-in-hand with some of our special ed teachers, reaching out and meeting with them for best practices to ensure his success. He works closely with administrators and reaches out to us, his parents, as needed so he can continue to improve on his teaching methods. And he has attended every CPAG meeting over the last two school years so that he can hear parental concerns and better understand special education. He has worked with my son, as well as the child of another one of our CPAG leaders, and has ensured success for them. We thank Mr. Snyder and commend him for being an outstanding educator. This is the perfect example of what we need to move forward in this district. Thank you, Mr. Snyder, for welcoming all students to your classroom, for modifying as needing, as needed, and for treating them with respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sabarito. If I can just comment, Mr. Snyder is someone that I've worked with on a professional level, because he is now one of the directors at the middle school, but prior to that, he is part of the sequential teaching method, and he is, you did him justice. He's outstanding, and I thank you so much for taking the time to acknowledge him. I know that he will be overwhelmed, overwhelmed, and probably turn red when he finds out that he was given such wonderful accolades. So thank you so much for taking the time to acknowledge him, because he truly is special. Thank you.
And just, I wanted to say as well, Mrs. Sabarito, thank you for all that you do in our, in our school district, being the CPAG leader. I know you do work tirelessly as a volunteer with the best interest of the children at mind. And yes, Mr. Snyder is absolutely one of our exceptional educators here in Monroe Township, and we are lucky to have him. So thank you for recognizing him. Hello, Mr. Malam?
Hi, good evening, Pradeep Malam, 4J Place. Lack of time, so I didn't touch a couple of options in the previous comment. One is changing the Oprah Officer. So I'm really glad that this board has taken some action on this particular item. I had a very, very few hiccups with the previous Oprah Officer, that he wantedly delayed some of my requests, and he wantedly delayed, he wanted to ignore some of the requests until unless I repeatedly reminded him. And there was one specific incident where he was given a falsified document, and with the previous Oprah, and I took that case up, and she clearly did not take any action, but he backed his subordinate, who is then the Oprah Officer, and she suggested me to take it to the court or ethics commission. But what is the point? He has already, it will be added to his laundry list of ethics violations. So I don't want to do that one at that time, so I did not do that. But I, thanks to this board to change the Oprah Officer. And just now, our BA has suggested that moving some money from OpEx to CapEx. I would like to suggest you do your due diligence before you vote on that particular item, because once the money goes into the CapEx, you cannot bring back to the general budget or operational budget. It has to be used for, it has to be used for capital projects only. That's what in the previous meetings he was explaining, the same thing. And coming to the Jamesburg financials, I still have the question that is not answered last time, the transportation bills for Jamesburg. I analyzed it four years of transportation invoices and payments until 1920 school year. All the invoices that are from every year, the invoices of September, October, November, December, will go out only in January, and they will pay only in January. I don't know what kind of this agreement. And all the invoices, for all the 10 months invoices, it's the same exact number. But in the last meeting, he was explained that this is based on the daily average, some ADE, average daily enrollment number. Based on that, we are going to invoice the Jamesburg for transportation costs. But how can that ADE is exactly the same amount for the whole year? So that is another question. And I don't see the adjustments still in the final budget that is approved, that is uploaded on the website, for the transportation component only. So I would like to hear some answers.
Mr. Gorski, would you like to answer some of these questions?
Yes, with regard to your question or your statement, why the bills for transportation lag in the beginning of the school year and don't go out, as you put it, till January? The reason for that is, you have to understand, there's a budgeted amount that is a fixed number in the budget. It's not adjusted during the year. It's one number that's put in the budget. Then we do a DRTRS report, District Report of Transported Resident Students. That's as of October 15th. That determines the number of routes and the number of Jamesburg students who we deliver. So we can specifically invoice them exactly what they owe the district for transportation costs. And then sometimes there is a variance between what is budgeted and what is actually charged with, which again, is specific to the number of students delivered, and that's normal for any budgetary account. Was there any other question yet?
Yes, so even if it is decided on October 15th, why the invoices are not generated immediately, or it's not sent on until like January?
I'm not sure it waits till January, I think it might be sent a little before that, but either way, the money's paid before the end of the school year.
Yeah, money is paid, but like, this is what the, the, from the eyes of Lehman, it looks like this, there is some untold arrangement between those two BAs, and he invoices late and they pay, but they pay before the year end. So that's where the clarity is missing here. Anyhow, thanks for your response.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Pete Tofano, 10 Catherine Street. First, I'd like to send my condolences to Mrs. Chanley. In your first 70 days, it's been appalling what some disgusting community members have tried to do to you and your name, simply for taking this role. Four of my five kids have gone through the middle school, and largely in part because you were the principal there, they had a great experience.
Thank you.
And I thank you for that, and I thank you for your professionalism and for not screaming at the top of your lungs for what some, like I said, disgusting people in this community put you through and your name. Secondly, I'd like to thank the board for, again, addressing, excuse me, for addressing the not getting your information off of social media, and to come to the district website and get the proper information for any questions that people have. I don't understand why social media has such fake information on it, unreliable information. I mean, after all, we have a seasoned Facebook reporter right in the front row every meeting, and I don't understand how things get mixed up. But thank you for addressing that, it's very important. Now onto my last question, it's a pretty much a two-part question. Can, does anybody have any numbers? I'm not looking for exact numbers of how many ethics complaints were filed in this district in the last three years?
How many were filed?
Yes.
I don't know the exact number. I would guess probably maybe eight to 10?
Eight to 10. Do we have an approximate number of how much that cost the district?
I do not off the top of my head. Mr. Gorski, would you happen to?
Not off the top of my head, there's.
Rough numbers, rough numbers. I'm not looking for exact.
The district's responsible for the first $5,000 for each one, and then the insurance company picks up the rest, but sometimes they're settled before the $5,000, so it's impossible to answer you accurately.
Maybe the board attorney might know?
I don't, because I've only been here for one of those three years, but if we assume that eight is a fair number, and given Mr. Gorski's representation, I think it's fair to assume that the number is in the $30,000 to $40,000 range during that three-year period.
Out of those, those ethics files, ethics complaints filed, how many of them have actually had a violation of ethics? Do we have an answer to that?
In the last three years, three to four years?
Yeah, how many, how many of those were found to be ethics violations? Actual ethics violations?
In the last, probably in the last five years that I know of, I do not believe any board members were, had violated ethics. There was one ethics complaint that was found affirmative that had violated ethics.
And what disciplinary actions took place for that ethics violation?
To date, I don't believe any.
Zero. So, so this district has spent thousands of dollars on what I will call frivolous ethics complaints, and the one complaint that did go through, no disciplinary action was taken, correct?
From what I understand, correct.
Okay. The point of this whole thing is, we talk a lot about wasted money. I feel that there are a lot of ethics complaints that are written about this district that are personal, they're personal vendettas. And that is costing the taxpayers of this town thousands of dollars, thousands, and a large in part of personal vendettas. I would like to stress that people who have personal vendettas are costing taxpayers thousands of dollars, and they should get a hobby. Maybe volunteer some time, get your stress out doing a different thing, maybe go to the gym, because I'm tired of paying my tax money to people's frivolous bull. And it needs to change. It really does. And the fake news that goes on on Facebook is really disgusting. Again, personal vendettas, suing people for free speech, it's disgusting, and it needs to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Tofano.
Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. I'll come back to my comments earlier again, since the clock ran out very quickly. How are the children separated during lunch period now? What is the social distancing?
So each building is a little bit different. I know that in the elementary school, we had recent conversations, so I know this personally, recent conversations as a leadership team, Dr. Lehman was there as well, with principals. In the elementary buildings, we've asked that they have separation has been even further when we returned from the holiday, because we were a little bit concerned coming back, because we wanted everybody in school. So I know that the rule of thumb is to the best of the ability during lunch, is it four feet? Four feet, so I know in the elementary schools, they went ahead and started utilizing other areas. In the middle school, I know this personally, and Mr. Tag probably knows, I think it was 30 tables. We have now utilized the cafeteria, it's now been expanded into the gymnasium. So during that time period, we've changed the gym classes to become health classes so they could utilize the classrooms, so that during the time that we have lunches, which is three lunch periods, they now have expanded to now, to no longer have the children less than three feet apart that they had in the past. that they had in the past. And in the high school, it was my understanding that they're already separated to the best of their ability. And because they couldn't separate any further, and I know it's cold, we were opening windows. And we were also trying to move people so that that 15-minute rule would not be applicable. So that's the way they're currently separated. But no one is, oh, let me not assume your question. That's, that's how they're separated.
So are the children adequately distanced during lunch and gym?
The guidance is to the best of our ability. And that's what we do. Is every child six feet apart when the mask is off?
I'm not asking a particular distance. I'm asking adequate. Because the Department of Health and the Education, their guidance beyond five days says adequate spacing is the only thing that's required beyond the five days from staying home. So I'm wondering what makes a child coming back after being COVID positive not adequately distanced versus a child that's sitting at lunch for 30 minutes eating unmasked? Adequately distanced?
I would agree with you. The word adequate then would be semantics for us to determine what do we mean by the word adequate.
So, but adequate is, is the basis for your saying that we need to segregate our children?
Because right now, I believe, and I don't have it in front of me, and I don't know if Dr. Lehman knows the exact, because there is exact footage that they like to say to our best of our ability, "We do not meet." "We have never met," even previous to me, me being as principal. The exact footage, and I think it was six feet to my recollection.
The guideline doesn't mention distance.
The original one did, I think.
The back, you know, Delta variant or whatever had a distance piece on it. So when we met with the county superintendents, they had the health department that crafted the guidance for us. And superintendents put the health department on the, on the spot and said, "You're creating guidance that is not realistically implementable in a school district." And their response was, "Well, we're putting the health guidance out. It's up to you guys to figure out how to make this happen." So then the pointed question was, "How far are you telling us? What is your recommendation to keep these kids separate day six through 10?" And after some, I would say, offhanded comments about different color masks and separating kids, they said six feet should be your benchmark. So it's not written in the guidance, but the people who crafted this guidance in this meeting we had, they gave our county the guidance to say six feet. And that's probably referencing back to what they had as previous guidance in other. So that's, that's what our, that's what our mindset was in terms of thinking about separating the kids for the sixth.
So then how isn't your policy segregation when you're saying if you've been COVID positive, your adequacy is not the same as that child's adequacy in terms of distancing? You understand what I'm saying?
No, say it again.
You're either adequately distancing the children to prevent the spread of COVID or you're not, regardless of the kid is coming back from being positive or not. So I don't understand why there's a double, you're saying we adequately space the children. Well, if you adequately space the children, the Department of Health's guidelines for the kids to come back after five days is they just need to be adequately spaced if they have their masks off. So if they are adequately spaced, they can sit at a table with the rest of the children and eat their lunch without having a mask on. Because you're saying they're adequately spaced.
Based upon the guide, based upon the recommendations of this meeting that he's discussing, they will not be adequately spaced. Our children are not six feet spaced.
Then you're putting every one of our children at lunch at risk right now because they're not adequately spaced.
So the, the guy.
Because we don't turn off the COVID spigot at lunch. Right? I mean, let's face it.
I hear what you're saying, but what they're, the way they qualified it is the students you're bringing back who were known positives on day five, day six, that's the group they're saying specifically they wanted the more space than you, than you currently have. They weren't saying the kids that are, say asymptomatic.
So kids that are asymptomatic could be spread. They don't have to be adequately spaced.
I get, and I totally get where we're talking.
Is that what it says or that's how you're interpreting it?
No, what we're saying is the kids that are in school today that are healthy, we are meeting the requirements. If we were to implement something and bring them in day six, they're saying you need more space than you have.
Because they were known positives.
Because they're known positives. That's it.
Then I question, then I really truly question about the safety of kids knowing that COVID, especially with this strain. I'm in healthcare myself. It's majority, you know, the majority is it's asymptomatic spread. So we have a bigger risk then if we're saying we don't have the space so those kids don't really have to be adequately spaced. But, you know, we'll treat the ones that we know are positive, right? Doesn't make a lot of sense. I think I beat it dead. You guys need to think very clearly on how you're gonna, to go about this. And then when we talk about segregation, it was thrown around a lot tonight. But very rarely is that word ever used when it comes to our special education students. And there are a lot of things in place. I was on a CPAC meeting not too long ago. We talked about even just the bus drop-offs, how these kids are segregated. We never hear about that. We're quick to throw around those big buzz terms in situations like this, but we never talk about it. And it's brought up a lot. I know Mrs. Saberito talks about it a lot as well. When are we going to start hearing about those issues? See, the thing with special education children, they don't need to adapt to the schools. The schools need to adapt to them. And there are a lot of circumstances where that's not happening. And we never hear about that when we use the big words segregation. So I know it was brought up at the last meeting about the buses. That's just one thing. I'm running out of time. I would like to understand because it was said that parents have a choice in that situation so the kids aren't segregated. I'm a parent of a special education student and have never gotten that choice. And I'd like to start hearing feedback on those situations again. Because if you want to talk about segregation, we can get a lot of special, special education parents up here. And those are the real situations when it comes to segregation. Thank you.
I'd be happy to address that, Mr. Fabiano. So I just recently started to come to CPAC. And I actually have come every time they had a meeting even in person, even when there was no other administrators there. So in my, I guess I'm at 77 days now. I took to heart, not just because it was an agenda item, because I do agree with you. So I have already had a formal meeting with both the principals of the middle school to discuss transportation and the segregation of special education, when it's applicable, when it is not applicable, what we can do differently. So they have already taken on the task now to start looking at the children that are on special needs buses. Why are they on special needs buses? By what determination are they placed there? Is it appropriate to have them on a regular education bus with it, with an aide if possible? Dropping them off in different locations? Why can't we drop them off in the front? Having conversations with parents to make sure that parents are comfortable? Because the IEP, it works in benefit for the child. And if that particular parent and child, "No, no, no, I want my child in a special needs bus dropped off in the back." We're going to not, not do that. I know it's a double negative, but we're going to do what's best for the child, not because of inclusivity, but because of what works for the child. So I asked them to get the data together from Genesis, go to their case managers, find out what buses they're on, what is the reason why they're on special needs buses? Was it a request of the parent or not? Who determined that they would be in a special needs bus? Why are they dropped off in the back? How many regular education children are on those special need buses? How many special education children are on regular education buses? And I just had that meeting with the middle school last week. And I actually shared that in my communication to, to the board. So that's my first step. I always go back to my home. I start at my home because it's easy for me to have those conversations. And from there, I'm going to continue to have those conversations so that we can come up with reasoning and logic of why they are separated. Sometimes it will be appropriate. Sometimes it is not. And now that I'm aware of it, I do bear the responsibility to look into it, working of course with Dr. Lehman and Ms. Ruela. But I went ahead and just did it on my own. I didn't really include anybody because it was easy for me to meet with the middle school principals to start that conversation. Because I agree with you 100%.
I just can't imagine that this has gone on for so long. Imagine, you know, in our situation, our son gets an IEP and the next day a letter comes, "We're going to have a special bus come to his house." And, you know, we don't need, we didn't need that. And he didn't want to be stigmatized. So why would that even be part of that process? But I appreciate you looking into it. Thank you. That's one of many issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Okay, oh, Mrs. Zeez?
Sarah Zeez, 3 Lancelot Drive. I'd like to address the discussions about Jamesburg and want to know why it's an agenda item on every finance meeting even though they're overpaying their debt ahead of schedule. I can understand why it would be a point of discussion if they were underpaying it or if they were defaulting. But they've been paying it and there's no way we can legally compel them to pay any more than they are. And furthermore, you know, as Mr. Bratsky said, whether or not Jamesburg gets representation on the board depends on the October 15th enrollment number. And the focus on this number throughout the year gives the impression to many Jamesburg residents that the board is just eagerly awaiting for the day where Jamesburg residents are less than 10% of our high school population so that the Jamesburg rep can be kicked off the board. This is the impression that is given with the constant discussion about this. And, you know, we are intertwined communities. We need each other. The lease on the Monroe Commons is expiring. We have three office suites there. I believe Ms. Chanley is going to talk to the Jamesburg administration about whether they can lease some space to us. And, I mean, these discussions are complicated if the representatives of Jamesburg feel offended. If the Jamesburg Board of Ed member has to come here and express offense. And, you know, it's one thing to say that we appreciate the contributions of Jamesburg and the arts and academics and the diversity they bring. But it, those feelings, those statements sound hollow when the representatives feel disrespected. So I would like to make that comment. And furthermore, I want to know how this board attorney feels about the elimination of universal attorney review. Because this is very concerning. And if there's any other large school districts that have their Oprah officer under the superintendent's office. Because we've had an independent auditor come in and evaluate the work of our business administrator. And this auditor was handpicked by the board, included a certified fraud examiner, and said that everything was great. They gave them the highest opinion. And they are the experts. They're the experts in evaluating them. Furthermore, as an aside, this discussion about getting back to Jamesburg, Jamesburg transportation costs. Jamesburg reimburses us for these expenses. They make up like 0.1, 011, 0, 01% of the school budget. And there are other things that could be discussed at finance that save us more money, like our legal fees. I believe that we have incurred more legal fees with an interim attorney than we would have if we had a salaried in-house attorney. And yet, even though this is on the finance committee agenda, the figure's never discussed. So we don't know what the full year legal fees have been paid. And so I think that should be a point of discussion because the board has control over that. The board can hire an in-house attorney. And so, so I have a question about what other, how the attorney feels about the elimination of universal Oprah requests, attorney review. And also, final question. The architect said that we will need temporary facilities while Apple Garth is under renovation. And so where are those 450 students going to go while Apple Garth is being renovated? Will all of them fit in the senior center? Can we use the senior center for two years? Will we need trailers? How much will it cost? So I have multiple questions. I was hoping for an answer.
Well, Ms. Zeez, your questions must be directed toward the chair.
Okay.
Not toward our attorney.
Sure.
What I can tell you is that there is no, I have not seen in the law, and Mr. Greg Leardi, you could help me here if you wish. There is no universal attorney review of Oprah that is needed for Oprah requests. The decision came after an organizational scan as Mrs. Chanley has detailed to us and mentioned. I don't understand why we would want to have every single Oprah request for every piece of information. Go to our attorney that would then thus be hiring the attorney to be our Oprah custodian. And that is not the role of the board attorney. The board attorney is there for the board to seek advice when needed. And that should not be every single Oprah request. As you can imagine, that does increase our attorney costs.
It only does if you have, if you have an attorney that's paid by the hour. If you have a salaried in-house attorney, then they can handle all those Oprah requests. And the thing is, there are two functions. There's custodial function, someone who holds the records. And there's an attorney review function. They're separate functions. So to have strong internal controls, those functions need to be separated to prevent any one person from having too much power.
Could I speak on one comment? Yes, Mrs. Chanley?
To my understanding, and of course, Mr. Gorsky can correct me, you're saying that they're separate, but.
They're two functions.
Thank you. Two functions. That's a better way of putting it. Thank you. But to my understanding, and I could be wrong, but to my review of what I've seen, they are not separating, they are not functionally, they are not functioning separately. So what I have been seeing is almost, and I will not say all because it's a very inclusive word. I will say that the majority of the Oprah requests that I have seen, because I have not been privileged, I have not been CC'd on all of them. But for those that I have been CC'd on, they require the conversation, communication, intervention of an attorney. It is my understanding, and of course, I will, I am the type that will probably do the training with my secretary because I like to increase my knowledge base. It is my understanding that the Open Records Act allows us to provide almost everything when appropriate. Of course, there's personnel issues, confidential issues and so forth. So the majority of the requests can easily be appropriately handled without an attorney. So I don't know if I'm just not understanding you or if perhaps I am, I am wrong. Maybe the attorney would want to speak on this now. Because it's my understanding that although I hear you, there's separate functions. To me, one does not have to live within the other. That's my understanding of it. But I could be wrong. Sure.
First of all, we've talked about this already with regard to Oprah. Obviously, the district had an in-house counselor before. And the in-house counselor was instrumental in doing a lot of the redactions that are required during Oprah, providing a lot of the consistency that was mentioned before. And facilitating me in the capacity of the Oprah officer in getting a lot of the actions out. We had some requests that had over 10,000 documents that had to be provided. The attorney and I worked over weekends to get these things done on time. And it performed efficiently and well, in my opinion. Then we transitioned from an in-house attorney to a contracted attorney. There was a somewhat liberal reliance on Mr. Porgio's firm in the beginning because we were treating it the same way as in-house. That stopped very early in a couple of months into Porgio's assistance with Oprah. It has been my response sending out the Oprahs to the requesters to CC the superintendent of schools on every single one. So I don't know why there's this question that they're not. You may not see them when they come in. I agree with that. They come in to me. But whenever I send an Oprah out, I have always CC'd the superintendent of schools. Now, only in certain times where the board attorney has been asked to help provide, some exemptions, some legal language of why certain things are not to be required to be furnished to the requestor. We have solicited opinions from the law firm. And in certain instances where there could be a perceived conflict with the Oprah officer and the person requesting the information, I've asked that the responses go directly from the attorney. But the heavy reliance or the leaning on the attorney that is being portrayed here is simply not factual.
Well, I think our legal bills would say otherwise to that fact. Thank you, Mrs. Zeez. Your time has expired.
No, no answer to, but the senior center.
So what was presented, and I believe was presented with the additional architect as well. The way it works with the removal of children when necessary, there is a, the way it was described to us is that there is going to be, depending upon what part of the building they're working in, they very well may be able to keep students in the building in a safe measure with all the components and the requirements as per code and requirements because they have so many codes that they have to follow. And there may be a time, we haven't gotten to that point yet. You're absolutely right where the children may need to be relocated. I will not speak to the senior center because as I have been acting superintendent, that is not a conversation that I've had with anyone from either this board of education, Mr. Gorsky or Dr. Lehman. It would be my understanding that it is possible that temporary TCUs, temporary classroom units would be placed on the Apple Garth property on the other side, which I'm very familiar with because when I was the principal of Apple Garth, we had more trailers than we did actual classrooms in the building. And that is where they were. We actually used to make a joke and call it something else. And we used to call it the boardwalk because there were so many. So we know that it's very viable and it's very doable. Of course, your next question would be if you had more time about cost. And these are things that of course we will be conscientious and responsible to all of the taxpayers and have that conversation. But we don't, we haven't put the cart before the horse yet because we realize that regardless of whether you knock it down and build new or you add on, there were various different questions. Some were about TCUs, some were not applicable, some were. So these are the conversations that we are having. The senior center, which I've heard now from you and I've heard from other people, I'd have to get, I'd have to be advised from my board because I'm not familiar with that. So I'm not saying it's not so, but it's just not something that, that I have any information on that I could share regarding the senior center. Because I wasn't in this position, so it's not something that I've been privileged to.
It was mentioned when there was, there was talk about like a boiler failing or something.
Your time has expired. Your time has expired, Ms. Aziz. Thank you. I, I do believe that what, what had been said to the board by previous administration was that the senior center could be utilized in an emergency situation.
Oh, in an emergency. So like a fire block, or you couldn't open a flood?
No, if the boiler exploded.
If the boiler exploded. Or the roof collapsed.
Or the great flood.
And I, and I would just like to, again, reiterate just a comment that Ms. Aziz has brought up. There, there is an expectation as a board member, when you are voting on items, that you get information provided to you. And if there is information that you feel that is necessary to make a decision or have an understanding of something, a board member has the, they, they should be doing their due diligence to make sure they have that information. So, you know, while we talk about, you know, the questions or the comments about social media come up, when it's constantly portrayed on social media that board members are, are doing something wrong by asking questions, that is where the public is starting to hear on social media that, hey, maybe they're, maybe they're asking questions they shouldn't, maybe, maybe they don't, maybe they devalue the Jamesburg students. Maybe they don't trust the Jamesburg rep. That is not true at all. And that has not been portrayed by this board ever. We value every student. We value Mr. Rutsky's here on our board representing Jamesburg. The simple fact that board members have been asking for information is not a reason to believe that we have any animosity or ill will toward Jamesburg. The simple fact is that board members have asked time and time again, the public has come to the podium and asked time and time again for simple information to be provided. And when it's not, it gets questioned, why not? So that there is no ill will here toward Jamesburg or any of the students or their Board of Education. It was more of an internal issue, getting information that should be provided to board members. Is there anybody else wishing to speak at public forum? Seeing none, I will close the public forum. Our next item on the agenda is our closed session resolution. I believe we need to make a motion first to appoint a temporary secretary for the remainder of the meeting.
I make a motion to appoint Ms. Beerman.
Second.
Third, third.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The closed session resolution. Excuse me, I have to turn on reading. Can't see at this point. Okay. Our closed session resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of Public Laws of 1975 NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects. Harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Update on board authorized investigation from Porzio Compliance Services LLC. Superintendent search update. Confidential personnel matters. Revised MTEA live streaming sidebar. The following closed session, following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We have five, we have five items on the agenda. I would assume it would probably take close to an hour, hour and a half. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting back to order. We have a couple of resolutions that we will read at this time.
I can take this one.
Get close, Karen.
It is recommended that the board approve the termination of the employment of employee number 4205, effective January 27, 2022. The superintendent of schools and the business administrator, board secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the Board of Education. I have a motion for it first, whatever.
Motion.
Second. Second.
Mrs. Fabiano moved. And Mrs. Belko, uh, Ms. Arminio?
Mm-hmm. Now do the roll call. Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano.
Yes.
Mr. Shirela is absent. Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Ms. Ratner is absent. Mr. Rutsky.
Yes.
Ms. Bora.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Beerman says yes. Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
And the ayes have it.
All right, thank you. And we have another resolution?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the revised sidebar with the Monroe Township Board of Education, Education, the Monroe Township Education Association in its revised format that was agreed to.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. First by Mr. Nikotinsky, second by Ms. Arminio.
And the roll call, not in the same order apparently. Ms. Bora.
Yes.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano.
Yes.
Mr. Rutsky.
Yes.
Ms. Ratner is absent. Mr. Shirela is absent. Ms. Beerman says yes. Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
That passes.
Okay.
Public portion.
Yeah. We now have our public forum. Seeing nobody here. Nobody's here, so we will close public forum. The next scheduled Board of Education meeting is on February 16, 2022. It was discussed in closed session to start that meeting at 6:00 PM, where the board will go into closed session to conduct interviews for the superintendent role. The public meeting will begin at 7:30 PM after our closed session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.